Okay, I'd like to bring the Commission meeting to order today. It's August 26, 2019. Mayor Larry was unavailable for the meeting, so I Vice Mayor Seidel will be running today's meeting, which it's Cindy's last day in here, but it's my first day sitting behind his microphone. So let's see if we can make it work great for everybody. So with that being called to order, I'd like to invite Ms. T. Rogers up to give her invocation. She's the Humanist Chaplain of University of Central Florida. Thank you. And then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Thank you for the opportunity to offer an invocation on behalf of your atheist, humanist, and other nonreligious constituents, and all of those who have chosen to call Winter Park their home. William James said, "Act as if what you do makes a difference." It does. These are great words to open this reflection. You are here to invest your time today in leadership and in service. You represent people who count on you to act on their behalf fairly and with compassion and respect for all. Leaders serve everyone, even those who are not like us. So today, let us seek common ground with each other and among all people to build bridges across our differences. Let us recognize and consider all people's needs individually and collectively, and uphold each person's dignity. May we be aware of the impact and importance of our actions. May we be passionate and engage intentionally in meaningful discussion and set an example of inclusion and excellence. Today, let this council approach the tasks before you collaboratively, guided by integrity, and anchored by your commitment as public servants to the well-being of others. May you deliberate with wisdom, insight, and impartiality. May you be passionate and remain focused on uplifting others, connecting the community, and pursuing the greater good for all of your constituents. Thank you for the difference you make in our community.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. So first off, we have the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
So move.
So I'll take the move on my right and a second on my left. Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, and a couple of orders of business here under the mayor's report. Cindy, if you could please join me down here at the microphone. We have a little proclamation here.
I should have brought my stepstone.
All right. Well, just before getting into the proclamation, you have this mic on?
No.
Okay. Got it. I was turning it off, huh? All right. No, thank you. You know, Cindy's been here since I started on the utility advisory board. She's been a great asset to the city. And she also likes the same football team as I do, so we get along very well. And gonna miss talking to her on Mondays about what happens during the season this year. So with that, I have a proclamation put together for Cindy Bonham Day here at the city. So September, which will be September 6, 2019. Correct, Randy?
That's correct.
All right. So it's not today. It's in a couple weeks here. Whereas Cindy Bonham was born in Baltimore, Maryland, and lived in Harbor's Ferry, West Virginia, as well as Northern Virginia, before relocating to Florida in 1991. And whereas, in the early 19s, in the early 70s, Bonham began a 20-year career with the Central Intelligence Agency in Langley, Virginia. Whereas she began her career as city clerk with the winter, the city of Winter Park on July 24, 2000. And whereas she ran flawless elections and transitioned city ordinances, resolutions, paper records, and minutes to electronic, making these records easily accessible and searchable. And whereas she earned her Master Municipal Clerk designation in 2012 after years of attending training courses. And whereas the city celebrates Cindy Bonham's career and wishes her well in her retirement, as she enjoys spending more time with her daughter and identical twin grandsons. Now, therefore, I, Greg Seidel, former Mayor Steve Larry, by virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the city, Vice Mayor of the city of Winter Park, do hereby proclaim Friday, September 6, 2019, to be Cindy Bonham Day in the city of Winter Park, Florida. Thank you, Cindy. Cindy, if you'd like to say a few words now. We do have another group to come up to talk. Do you want to say something now, or are you gonna wait till they talk?
I'd rather give it over the list.
Okay. Let's hear what you got. Could you please give your name and address?
Cindy Bonham, retired city clerk. Well, I came here 19 years ago and had no idea what to expect. And it turned out to be quite a journey. Crap. I told myself I was not gonna do this.
Just think of Darryl Green's Hall of Fame. Am I gonna cry? Darn straight, I'm gonna cry. All right.
Okay. Anyway, you know, I came here and I just want to say I have been so proud to work here for the city of Winter Park. You know, it's an amazing city. It has so many amazing people. And I've made a lot of friends, a lot of, you know, gosh, my coworkers, just citizens of this city. I've gotten close to quite a few of them. And I'm gonna miss everyone, but I'm going on to my next chapter in life, whatever holds. I just, a couple things, just wish that, or hope that my next 19 years go a little slower. Yeah. Anyway, I want to be standing here and not somewhere else. And, you know, I just, you know, I'll be around. I, you know, I want to come if you need help, Randy. I've told you, I'm here. Well, Brandy.
You know, I love you, Carolyn, but jeez. Enough is enough. No kidding. Anyway, no,
it's been, it's been a great ride, you know. It just has. I'm very blessed. I'm very thankful for everyone and all the support I've gotten throughout the years. And everybody's just been truly great. And, you know, and, you know, I want to say some good things about our staff. You know, our staff is, they're amazing people. And they're very smart. They know what they're doing. My boss is amazing. He's, I wouldn't want his job for any amount of money in the world. He, he does a great job. And he looks out for all of us. You know, we've been a great team all these years. And thank you, guys, for, you know, always being there and getting your agenda items in on time. Well, most of you, anyway.
We know who she's talking about.
Yeah, we, they know who I'm talking about. But anyway, it's been great. And I just thank you. You know, I, I'm very blessed. And it's, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. And now we have Pat from the Florida Association of City Clerks to come up and say a few words. And then we'll invite your family up for photos.
Oh, okay. Uh-oh.
The speaker's on. You don't have to touch him.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Commission, staff, and all of those present. My name is Patricia Burke, and I am with the Florida Association of City Clerks, and I am Central East District Director. Also with me this afternoon is Maria Waltrip and Kathy Sataro from the city of Maitland, and Tracy Ackroyd from the city of Claremont. I am here today to congratulate Cindy Bonham, Master Municipal Clerk, on her retirement. Cindy, I know you have served your city with dedication and professionalism. I am sure your journey as a city clerk has been filled with challenges and rewards, but because of your dedicated service, nothing can stop you. Your replacement will have some very large shoes to fill, and there's no crying in the clerk's office. I commend you for your 26 years of hard work, perseverance, and municipal service, 19 of those years which were with the city of Winter Park. I know that you are looking forward to a well-deserved retirement, and I hope you have some wonderful and exciting adventures planned. At this time, I would like to take a moment and read Florida Association of City Clerks Resolution 2019-03. A resolution of the Florida Association of City Clerks expressing gratitude and recognition of Cindy Bonham for seven years of service as city clerk for the city of Oviedo and 19 years of service and dedication as a city clerk to the city of Winter Park, Florida. Whereas, Cindy Bonham has worked for the city of Oviedo as their city clerk for seven years, and for the city of Winter Park for 19 years as their city clerk. And whereas, Cindy Bonham has had an active, has been an active participant in the Florida Association of City Clerks for 25 years while receiving the designation of Master Municipal Clerk in 2012, serving on the Bylaws and Manuels Revision Committee, and volunteering at the Florida League of Cities Conference booth on more than one occasion. Whereas, Cindy Bonham has carried out the duties and responsibilities of the city clerks, of the city clerk in her capacity to the best of her abilities, utilizing and sharing her knowledge and expertise, which was enhanced by her participation in FACC through its conferences and educational seminars. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Florida Association of City Clerks, Section 1, the Florida Association of City Clerks offers its sincere appreciation and extends best wishes on behalf of all of its members to Cindy Bonham in recognition of her retirement after 25 years of dedicated service and professionalism in representing the office of the city clerk. Section 2, this resolution will take effect immediately upon adoption and authentication by signatures of the President and President-Elect of the Florida Association of City Clerks, presented this 26th day of August 2019. It says the 28th, but the 26th day of August 2019, be Meeks, Florida Association President, and Deborah Buff, President-Elect, Florida Association of City Clerks. Again, on behalf of the Florida Association of City Clerks, the Central East District, thank you for your service and dedication, and enjoy your retirement to the fullest. And if we could all get a picture, that would be...
I'd like to say just one more thing if I can.
Sure.
I think I'll allow that today.
There's, there's, there's one other thing that I'm looking forward to, probably very high on my list, and that is not being the last one to leave this Commission chamber on Monday nights. Thank you.
Do you want to give the proclamation?
Yes, with that.
Yeah. Come on.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
You want to hold on your hard version? Guys, when I come up, can we do something in front? Yep.
Greg, can we, after we did that, can we do it with your grandbabies?
You know what? Probably need to do...
Doesn't matter. Steven's out here. We don't have to worry about him.
This is the center, you guys.
Cindy in the center.
How'd you get in there, right? There you go.
You know, Thor and my...
Here we go.
Oh, we need to get some...
Yeah, Lesameth, can you ring the boys up?
Repeat.
She asked me, she said, "I'm moving." Today's moving day. They're moving in the house. So she took a time out.
Oh, bless her heart.
Yeah.
Can you actually hold both of them at the same time?
They have got to be beautiful.
Have fun.
Here's your...
this momentous occasion.
The mayor's report never took so long, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Now I've got half the people leaving. It's like, no, pretty nice. And we'll all miss Cindy. She did a great job, and we wish her well. And a long, long retirement, as she's seeking. So the next item is Item 5, the Citizen Budget Comments. And this is, we don't need to read anything at this time, Randy? And then, is there a spot where we're going to discuss our...
Yes, we have budget discussion later on the agenda.
Okay, okay. Okay, so we'll open the floor to any comments on the budget. This is not public comment period for anything. This is comments strictly pertaining to the budget. Do we have any going once, going twice? We have one? Okay. All right. Fantastic. Yep. Okay, this is about the overall budget for the city, is what the public...
Carolyn was nodding yes. Later?
If it's for the budget, then yes.
She's here to make a question.
Yes, absolutely. No worries. Take your time.
Deputy Kaminski, I'm the Executive Director of the Alpin Palashik Museum here in Winter Park. I've been in this position for almost 17 years now. I was born and grew up here in Winter Park, and it's been a true love to be able to serve the city in a lot of different ways, as well as take care of the museum. I appreciate the opportunity to just thank you for consideration of our request. We very much need it. As I think you're all very well aware of the lack of funding coming in in state grants and other things. And I just want to point out a few things that we'll find. Peter? Does this work?
It's okay. Are you gonna need more than the three minutes, or is...
No, I'll be very quick. I just want to say how proud the museum is to have been a partner with the city on the completion of this city hall. In 1964, Mr. Palashik gifted the city with the statue out front of Forest Idol. In 1984, we also...
Sure, which button?
In 1984, we gifted the Emily Fountain that is in Central Park, currently on very long-term loan. Van Carven is on Destiny at the library. And working with Randy and staff about placing some additional sculptures in the new library when it's completed. We are very aggressive in our, very aggressive in our program, and we serve the citizens. We feature the permanent residence, historical history of Alpin Palashik and the gardens...
Sabrina Burnett, Winter Park Public Library, we come before you today for some extra consideration, and like Debbie, wanted to say thank you so much for your continued support of the library with an annual operating increase. This year, we are asking for special assistance with a project that we've taken on for the new library, so we need to update our existing, we call it an integrated library system, but it's essentially our inventory management and patron database system, so it's the backbone of the library. We have to pay an annual fee, which we've already, we're going to pay in that fiscal year, so we're seeking assistance with the onboarding project cost for the new platform, so that we don't have to pay twice in one year. And this is something that we would be using in the new library, and it would enable us to do some of the new things we've anticipated, such as our new roaming model of service and introducing some new equipment and things, so we can do things the 21st century way in the new library. Any questions about that?
What's the value of your request?
Fifty-six thousand. And it's just one time, because we can cover the annual cost going forward.
It's actually an IT request.
Yes.
It's going to be technology.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Hi. My name is LaShawn DeLavitt. I am the Executive Director of the Winter Park Housing Authority. Which button? Is it this way? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about who we are and what we do. The Housing Authority of the city of Winter Park was actually created by the city back in 1970, and our mission basically is to provide affordable housing and access to resources so that our residents can become more self-sufficient and independent. We have a Board of Directors that's made up of six wonderful staff members. WPA staff is made up of basically three individuals, myself, a deputy director, a resident service coordinator, and then the properties are managed by Allied Orion Group. Since our inception, we have acquired six properties. Two of them are dedicated to the elderly disabled families, that would be Tranquil Terrace and the Plymouth Apartments. We service about 700 families in total. I'm here to speak with you about the Plymouth Apartments, which 196 individuals who are elderly and disabled called home, and they are all over the age of 62. The demographics of these families is as follows: the average income is about $18,000; their sources of income are primarily social security, pension, and some of them are employed; and the average rent is about $613 that we collect for each unit. The annual utility expense for the Plymouth is about $300,000, and after the debt service, this is the largest expense of this property. Here are some of the capital improvements that we are challenged with when it comes to the Plymouth Apartments. In 2015, the chiller was replaced, and along with remediation, it cost the property about $2 million. The next project that we're looking at is the roof replacement, which is estimated at about $450,000. How can you help? I am here on behalf of the 196 elderly disabled families that call the Plymouth home to ask for the $25,000 in the city's general fund. This will be a start in assisting us with our utilities and capital needs. Thank you again. Here's my contact information if you have any further questions or concerns.
Thank you. Any other budget comments at this time? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the next, is the City Manager's report. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just a reminder, of course, we're in the middle of hurricane season, and of course we have a storm that's brewing out there that has its sights on Florida. We don't know yet where it's going to be, but later in this week, we should know. I want to remind the residents out there that we have these pamphlets available for hurricane preparedness, as well as a reminder to stalk us on Facebook for the City Manager Emergency page that we'll use for getting updates out if, you know, if this storm does take a track that's going to impact this area. Also, as Cindy left, but I just wanted to add publicly my thanks for, for her years of service. She's, it's been, it's been great to have someone in that position that knew what they were doing, kept us out of trouble, especially when it came to elections and public records, so I just wanted to say that thank you. And with that, I want to turn it over to our illustrious Parks Director to give a presentation that you asked for at the last meeting about the summer program, Jason Seeley.
Good afternoon, commissioners. So we wanted to come in, come in today and give you guys an update. Our Parks Recreation Department just completed another great summer of programming with our, the two big main focuses being summer camp, obviously, and our aquatics programming. As you'll see here, our summer camp program had, it was a 10-week program, 150 kids per week, and that equaled out to about 7,000, over 7,000 visits, visits over the summer of our K through sixth campers. Over 200 of those children were residents out of the 238 unique enrollments, so that's about 75% of our, our participation is resident participants at the community center. As far as the summer camp goes, we try to provide diverse, diverse programming, so we work with a lot of our community partners. You see the Winter Park Playhouse, the Fire Department, the Police Department, as well as UCF and the library. Without these great community partners, we'd be not, we would not be able to offer such a great program for our kids. Our summer camp, when we think summer camp, we think K through sixth grade. Our summer camp program, though, goes all the way through 12th grade. We offer opportunities for those kids that age out, grades that going into seventh, or rather, eighth or ninth grade through 12th grade, the opportunity to participate in our junior counselor program. This year, we had 26 participants, and they've completed roughly 5,000 hours of volunteer service that goes towards scholarship programs and other things. And additionally, we have the Student Youth Enrichment Program, which was a, is a partnership with our CRA folks, and we had three students this year that participated at the community center within the Parks and Recreation Department. Lastly, with our summer camp, we always try to make sure that we get evaluations out to our participants. This year, we sent out roughly 200 evaluations. Of that, we received 81 back, and you can see, see from the results, we have about 75% of our evaluations come back, it's 75%, or, sorry, excellent, about 20% good, with the remaining being adequate, nothing in the poor range. Next part of summer camp, of our summer programming, is our aquatics programming. We offer aquatics at both Katy Way Pool and the community center, and you'll see that we had about 6,000 visits at Katy Way, 4,000 visits at the community center pool, and then also, we, summer camps are a very big part of our summer, of our programming at both pools, and you can see that we had about 5,000 to 6,000, 6,000 camp visitors as well that brought in roughly $23,000 in revenue. Instructional, instructional aquatic programming, 18 group swim lessons over the course of the 10-week summer, with 118 students going through the classes and going on to the next level, along with 65 infant students completing the course, completing courses, adding up to about 2,000 hours of instructional work. Lastly, our competitive clubs and our swim teams. We have 200 competitive swimmers working out of the Katy Way Pool, 52 Special Olympic athletes, combined for 50,000 training hours over this course of the summertime. And then, last but not least, we do, we also try to have some community events each summer, and you can see that we have roughly 200 participants in each one of our events, the Dive-In Movie, the Splash Into Summer, and our back-to-school, back-to-school event at the, in August. And then, lastly, you guys have, you should have in front of you something from our, a memory book or yearbook. Very good. That is, each year, our campers try to come up with a little project, and this year, that was their project. They made a little yearbook for their summer camp experience, so we wanted you guys to have a copy of that as well. So we'd like to, we thank you for the support that you guys provide, and it's, it's a great offering for the, for the community as far as the summer camp and the aquatics programming, so, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Jay. Yes, I did have one question, because I was at the pool the other day. The, the heating for Katy Way Pool, is that, that's being...
Both wells are, I believe, are in, we're still on, on target for the end of September, so it should be transitioned right from, from, there should be no fall off as far as the pool goes.
Great, fantastic. Fantastic, thank you.
We have hot water at Katy Way in the showers now?
No, not yet.
Not yet, that's next.
Well, that's the next step. We got hot water in the pool, so we're getting there.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
I would like us to bring that back up when we talk about budget, the hot water at the Katy Way Pool, for the showers.
That concludes my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, I had just one question for you, Randy, and then we'll see if there's any others, but the, there's a few emails going on about the Orange Avenue project that I saw, and I just kind of wanted to just clarify where we're at and what the next steps are, and...
Which, which Orange Avenue project? Are you talking about the, the traffic issue?
The traffic calming section.
So, so we got the final report from the FDOT. Staff is going through it now, and we'll be working with the DOT on next steps. I believe the recommendations out of that report were to prevent left turns, both east and west, off, out of Westchester during the afternoon rush hour, basically. And then there was one other recommendation, I can't remember off the top of my head, but uh...
Okay, is that, and I guess what I was trying to get clarified too, is that a short-term is the no right turn, and then they had the other document that they put together about, I believe it showed the roadway diet, Troy? Is that, I don't know if that's still on the table, or is that not on the table? That's kind of what my question was.
That one, they're looking to see if they can get safety funding for it, since it would be very expensive. So they're, they're working through that process, the DOT is.
Okay, thank you.
We got a report, I'm sorry, I can't remember who it came from, that we got the report that was for Corinne Drive. Okay, does that go anywhere here? Do we respond to that in any way? Was that just a courtesy to provide it to us, or what's the story?
It was just a courtesy to provide to us, since it's just outside of our jurisdiction. We don't, we don't have an, an active role. If we have a comment about any of it, you know, certainly we can make those, those comments. Staff's been somewhat involved throughout the process, giving input on, on what our preferences are, but, but, yeah, that is their Metro Plan's final report of what they're recommending, and now it's just a matter of, can the city of Orlando and Orange County fund the project?
And they're not asking the city of Winter Park for any funding for their, their project?
They have not made that ask yet. I don't expect that to be an ask.
Okay, I just would like, at some point, for us to make that available, because so many people in the city of Winter Park use Corinne Drive, so even though we all know it's not in the city proper, it would be very nice for us to be able to respond with some sense of, of that, so I don't know what we do with that. I just wanted to make sure that we make it available or in some form or fashion to other people.
Okay.
Randy, I had a couple of questions. The first one is, can we seek regulatory direction that the post office has to use for disposing of their property? I have not been able to find anything, so I'm hoping that maybe you or Kurt, I don't know if that's something you might be able to get your hands on, but I would like to understand what their restrictions are, and I've been unsuccessful in getting that. And the second one is, part of the Florida League of Cities last week was to have Governor DeSantis speak, and he was very encouraging in the way of water quality projects. Also, the settlement, the Volkswagen settlement. Florida's going to get $166 million that can be invested in transit, so that's why I keep bringing back up our shuttle bus for Sun Rail, and, and I'm hoping that perhaps we can qualify under that. But I would like to see our air quality reports for the last five years, whatever we can have, just sowing a trend of how our air quality is doing. I was very surprised to see Orange County and Orlando in particular being very high on the environmental justice scale, so, so because of that, it will make it easier for us to get grant funds, that's the good news. The, the not-so-good news is, that's not a good scale to be high on, so I'd kind of like to look at that if we could. Thank you.
I'm assuming we got three nods there. All right, thank you. Mr. Weaver, anything?
No, thank you.
So you're good?
Good.
All right, so the next item is the City Attorney's report, and Kurt, I don't know if you have anything new to add, but then we'll talk about the, the trees.
I think just a brief, a brief recap of what we talked about during the workshop session on the Arbor, Arbor statute, and, and how that's proceeding, it's my understanding that Drew Dennison is going to take the first stab at modifications to our Arbor code provisions, soliciting input from our various committees or boards, and that you all, the commission would like for us on the legal side to work with her because of the risk of liability to the city in, in potentially going beyond what the statute means. And, and the primary reason for that is, there's a lawsuit going on, as I think you all are aware, by Pensacola, that has sued a property owner to be able to stop that property owner from cutting down a champion live oak tree on that property owner's vacant parcel, when I think the city takes position there. It's, it's not dangerous, there's been a, a brief file in that suit. I understand there's a hearing today, so we're monitoring that. I've spoken to the League of Cities. League of Cities does not intend to intervene in that case as an amicus. The League is not aware of any other case statewide that's pending, except for that one in Pensacola. The thought also is that if the city makes changes to the city's Arbor ordinance, that we would like to be as aggressive as we can, understanding that there, there is the risk that we could get into a challenge, and the potential for attorney's fees if we are challenged. However, I think we've got some very good arguments that the attorney's fee provision does not apply, so when there's a preemption by the state of, in an area like this, if there is express preemption, or, or the, or our ability to regulate that has been preempted by the state, then there is some significant risk. However, we also have the, the argument that, one, there's no express preemption in that statute, and number two, that there is an express exemption under that statute that says if, if our code provisions on our trees was adopted pursuant to Chapter 166, the Land Development Code regulations, then we're also exempt. So we think we've got some good protections, but with the commission's blessing, we'll work with Drew and the staff to come up with ordinance to bring back to you to carry out, as aggressive a continued monitoring as we can. I think one thing that Drew wants to, would like the commission to address today is whether the staff should reinstitute permitting of, of the removal of trees or substantial limbs to those trees, because staff has not been permitting those since the adoption of this ordinance because of the concern and risk to, to the city. So a lot of local governments around the state did that, just stopped requiring those tree permits. Our suggestion is that with care, we should reinstitute those, but I'll let her address that, and it's really up to the commission to give direction on that.
Okay, thank you, Kurt. Do you have any comments on what he said, or I can tell you where I wanted to go with it at the moment?
Didn't we come up to the decision the last time we discussed that, that less than 10% of the ask were, were really at issue? I mean, this was a rule we had in place for nobody practically. It didn't, it didn't come into play. Is that not what we decided when we looked at all the statistics last time around?
I, I'll be happy to comment. I think when we looked at the statistics, excuse me, we did see that only about 7% were rejected, and I think Drew has some information about that. Of course, that was before the statute was plastered all over the news media, which I, the statute very clearly only applies to trees that present a danger. So that means we have exceptions in our code, so trees that present a danger would become just an additional exemption. We don't have to start, stop implementing our code, and I think, did you say that other cities that had... I mean, this was a rule we had in place for nobody, practically, it didn't, it didn't come into play. Is that not what we decided when we looked at all the statistics last time around?
I, I'll be happy to comment, I think when we looked at the statistics, excuse me, we did see that only about 7% were rejected, and I think Drew has some information about that. Of course, that was before the statute was plastered all over the news media, which I, the statute very clearly only applies to trees that present a danger. So, that means we have exceptions in our code, so trees that present a danger would become just an additional exemption, we don't have to start, stop implementing our code, and I think, did you say that other cities that had stopped have now reinstituted their codes?
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, that, from my personal perspective, that is absolutely the way I would like to see the city of Winter Park go. I want to be very respectful of the law, and you can discuss how we might change our code to incorporate that additional exception.
Commissioner, if I could here, the, the meeting we had earlier, we discussed the new tree law and, and our current tree ordinance, and the two things that came out of the meeting was that we feel we don't have any reason not to continue to enforce our current tree rules within the city, and so we wanted the commission to all get together and say, yes, we agree, there's no reason not to continue to enforce our current tree laws. And then with the condition of the danger trees, that they were going to investigate ways to have a post-mortem, that the people that sign off on those trees turn something in, and so the advice that it sounded like Kurt had given us earlier was, these things can be done, but we need to be careful how they, how we do them. So with regards to the lifting the suspension of tree permits, we wanted to go ahead and do that, and then let Drew and Mr. Arndman figure out the best way to address the danger tree issue in the short term, from just getting documentation or something. So that's, that's what, that, that was the outcome of our earlier meeting, so the first thing I'd like to do is get the commission to all agree or discuss that we go ahead and reinforce our current tree policy and our tree permitting.
I just wanted to make one minor point to Commissioner Sprinkle, that all of this only applies to residential properties, so commercial is off the table.
I understand that.
Do you need a motion, or do we, how do we...
So, so...
I'd like to have some discussion, and I'll...
Can I be really clear on it first? So, what I read, when I look at the law that was passed, okay, is not, the interpretation you are giving us now is different than the interpretation we got earlier, is that not correct?
No, I don't think, sorry.
I mean, why did we stop?
I wasn't involved in, in the decision to stop, I think Randy, I think Dan Langley and Randy and staff talked about it, and they, there was a decision, well, here's the problem, if, the statute's not clear, and because of that, we are at risk as a city, as is other, every other local government. So, so if you wanna be safe, you stop, you just don't do it. If, so every step beyond that, because right now, if you get a landscape architect, or an arborist that's licensed, they say it's a danger, then boom, they could cut the tree down with no permit, no fee, no review by the city. So, given, given where we are at this point is, and the, the lower risk of getting assessed attorney's fees in the event there's a challenge, the direction that we're suggesting is that if, move, move forward with as much enforcement as we can, but it's gonna be a balance. I mean, if, if we define dangerous trees to be trees that are, are only happen, will fall down, will be there only in a hurricane, then, then just about every tree, I, I, you have to be, you have, you walk through a definition of dangerous, you walk through a definition of what is the documentation, you walk through a definition of residential, and notice, right now, we don't know, and nobody does, and that's the subject of the litigation. So, we're going to take a position where it's gonna be a judgment call on, on all these permits and applications that come in, that Drew or the, or the city staff is gonna have to make. So it's not, if they make the wrong decision and we get sued over that, then we're gonna be in court over that, so...
Kurt, could you share why you thought this law came into effect, the situation that got this law passed?
So, as I understand it, after Hurricane Irma, there was a property owner where they had a tree overhanging their home, they tried to get a permit from the local government to take it down, it was either not issued timely, or was expensive, there was a lot of problems, and, and it blew up, the, I don't know what ultimately happened with that particular person, but it became a real problem, so that initiated this. So, as I understand it, the intent of this legislation is to protect, I'm sorry, is to allow the removal of trees that present a real threat to someone's residential home, or their property. But that's not the way it was written, it was not written carefully, in my opinion, at all. It exposes all local governments to, to great risk when it should not. So, rather than wait on the legislature to come back and fix it, it's, it's, right now we've got one case in, in Pensacola, we as a city, I think, have the opportunity to say, look, we're gonna, the legislature didn't define these things, we're gonna do it, we'll define that, and then we're gonna continue to, to impose this. When there's a true, in, a, a real risk to a property owner, residential property owner, then we'll say, okay. The problem is, which comes first? How do we even get to review that? So the statute was poorly crafted, both procedurally and definitionally, and it's, it's, it's created problems that we're now willing, I think, as a staff and as the lawyers for the city, to recommend moving forward with care, that's what, that's where we are.
And from my assessment of this, it clearly says that it only applies to trees that are a danger, and interestingly enough, a danger is not a term of art that are, that's used by an arborist. So, we have the opportunity to go in and say, okay, we're gonna create an exception, and we are not gonna require permits for trees that are dangerous, and oh, by the way, this is a clear professional definition of danger. So, what this ordinance did was it only applied to dangerous trees, that's it. So in reality, what it says is, that we can continue to operate the way we have always been operating for any tree unless it is truly declared a danger. So, we want to implement the law, we want to include the law in our codes, and very clearly define a process to make sure that we're honoring the intent and the word of the law, and we are continuing to protect our tree canopy. So I, and I, I really feel confident we can do both, and I'm hearing from the attorneys we can do both, and...
Okay, so I agree, except I have a whole nother take on why this law was passed, okay? I've also heard a whole nother story on why this law was passed, and it wasn't about a dangerous tree, it was about the cities perhaps having too much to say about a person's tree on their own property. So you have to accept the fact that that's also out there. Now, at some point, we as a city made the decision to make a change, and now we're wishy-washy, folks, we're changing back, and that's what I don't appreciate, and that's what I don't wanna do. The, the legislature's meeting in January, they're gonna be addressing this again. I just don't want us to look like we're changing things because of this, or because of that, and I, I understand, I, this isn't about the tree canopy, it's about how we do business, okay? So for some reason, we all sat up here and agreed a few months ago on the recommendation from people to do it this way, and now we're taking that back, and I have a little hard time with that.
Well, if I may.
I'm curious from our city manager about...
New information came to light, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it's taken a little time for our city attorney to look into it, and the fact that there's a lawsuit, you know, specifically challenging the law, I think it's, you know, it's a reasonable turn of events.
But that lawsuit hasn't been finalized yet, it just got filed, and maybe was heard today. I would much rather wait till we have the results of that lawsuit, and then you've got a reason to make a change. My, just filing the lawsuit, to me, isn't the reason to make the change. I, I just don't want us to be back here, and changing back is what I don't want us to be doing. And I think we have that possibility if we do it too soon.
But we initially, and you'll have to help me, Drew, why did we stop requiring permits? Because there was nothing in the law that would have led me to believe that was the proper thing to do.
I was given direction from city management.
Wait, and, well, sure, we're...
Because I don't remember having an agenda item where we had information, where we had the documentation and the case studies and the write-ups from even the league.
Where there were no case studies, it had just happened, I mean, the statute just got passed.
So we really didn't have any information, we was trying to be cautious.
Attorneys all over the state were advising their cities to, to discontinue it, and so that's, and, and in consultation with our city attorney staff, that's what we decided was the safe route to take. We've had a couple of months now of, of different reactions around the state, and, and, you know, we think a reasonable thing, I mean, it's not unreasonable to say, if you have a healthy tree, you still need a permit, so that's, that's, that's where we are.
And it, it was like a moratorium, we've had moratoriums before where we had to get more information before we were ready to move forward.
Actually, there, there was more to it, Carolyn, because we decided we were gonna go send this back to a committee, and we were gonna increase the rules that we were making on people's landscape plans, so this is not something we didn't discuss, we all sat up here and talked about it.
Yeah, if I could, the meeting we, we had earlier, we discussed that, and it was, there was nothing about putting more, more rules on people, there was going back and reevaluating our current rules and see if we're achieving our goal of having a high-quality urban forest, and, and so that's what we're looking for.
And they're still going to.
Right, so, so that's what we're looking to do, and so Drew is doing that currently with staff, and then the intent is for, once that is complete, she's gonna share that with the other boards, planning zoning board, economic development board, and the sustainability board, and whatever other boards are appropriate, she'll get the comments collected together, and then bring it back to us and present what she thinks the changes to the ordinance and ought to be, and, but in the meantime, though, that, it was to try to figure out if there's anything can be done from the danger tree perspective, is more of a post-mortem and not a, you have to check with us, but we, we as a city, who have all our trees in GIS, you know, we should be knowing which trees are being taken down, and so they need to submit something so we can keep our urban forestry count correct. And, and so that, for me, is that's what I've asked them to look at in the short term, why this rule plays itself out. But in, in the meantime, there's nothing with the current rule that's gonna get us in any trouble if we require people to get same tree permits that we've always required, but in the meantime, we should be looking at our tree permit process to see if there's ways to improve it all around, so...
So, do you, are you looking for nods, or do you need a motion?
I'm just looking for, right, just nods here, that we're all in agreement, because this wasn't really a commission action before, that, you know, we're directing the city manager that, you know, we're comfortable with him not, not, or enforcing this rule and lifting the suspension, and, and that we move forward on the other items, but it would somewhat be business as usual, in my mind, and then if people have these danger trees, they're welcome to get an arborist to say it's a danger tree and get it cut down without letting us know, but then, on the other side of that, I was hoping we could get some kind of information from them, just let us know what trees have been taken down, that's all.
So defining a process, defining the terms will be very helpful in implementing the law.
And, and we understand there is some risk here, we've been advised by the city attorney, so we're trying to make the, the best ma'am we can here.
I'm very comfortable.
Any more discussion? Anything else for Kurt? All right, fantastic, we'll move ahead to the, the financial reports, number eight is the next non-action item, presentation from Wes, thank you.
Got a financial report here for you, got the highlights for the first nine months, nine months into the fiscal year. Start with the only not-so-good news in the whole report, and that's our communication services tax. That is a tax on cable and satellite TV, landlines, cellphone lines, internet service is exempt, sales of internet service is not taxable, subject to this tax. And the way providers bundle these things and have caused the revenue to kind, as you see it, decline, we think we're gonna be about $300,000 short of our budget there. Fiscal 18, we got a, you see, it, it looks like a good year, but that includes about a $296,000 audit adjustment we got from Audit Department of Revenue for, had to do taxes related to previous year, so as a catch-up one-time receipt, if you take that away, the bar looks more like what we're projecting for the current year.
Wes, are these taxes that they're not billing anymore for, or they're getting to keep them and not pass them on to us?
They would not be billing them, so anything, they, in taxes, they're, they're required to bill them, and they go to the state, and then the state goes by an address database that we work with, and that's how they determine what jurisdiction the tax goes to. And that's also how the providers determine what tax, tax rate to use for each customer.
Does that include the 911 service?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, this is, as Wes said, the problem is the bundling, you know, now you get the 4995, all internet access, and people use that for their telephone and everything else, those taxes aren't on that, and, and so, you know, the, the way they bundled the cellphones, all these different things, is, less and less has been taxable. We know, anyone in here will say our cellphone bill hasn't gone down any in the last 10 years, it's only gone up, but the amount that's taxable continues to go down.
Right, lots of people get the, you know, their high-speed internet and their cable on the same bill.
So this is a, communication services tax has been anticipated to continue to decline, so we kind of have a feel for how much it's gonna go down, so it went down significantly more than we anticipated, is that...
That's correct.
Right.
And they're trying to find a replacement revenue for this, is that...
Not to my knowledge.
No.
Okay.
There's not much of a lobbying for local governments, except for the league of cities.
Internet commerce taxation, maybe? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Construction activity, still going very strong. That right-most line is a projection of where we think we will be for fiscal 19, and you can see that's almost as high as fiscal 18, fiscal 17 was really high. You know, we've got some new legislation to deal with here, as far as how much of a carryforward balance we can carry, so we're examining our fees there, and that'll be part of what we bring to you for a future meeting.
What is that, Wes?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar.
Building permit, that, excuse me, building permit fees, as you know, can only be used for the enforcement of the Florida Building Code, and so, when we collect more than we use to do that, we have to, we have to carry that forward and use it in a future year for enforcement of Florida Building Code, in a year where there's not as many permit fees. The new legislation has restricted the amount you can carry forward, and so...
Not the time period.
Right, so when we do our fee schedule, you're gonna see a proposed reduction in our building permit fees because of, we, we can't continue to carry as much as we've got carried forward.
They do it as a percentage?
The, the biggest, the big dollars of these fees are based on the estimated construction value, so if somebody comes in, and they've got like the Rollins Dormitory, I think that was about a $33 million project, so that gets a, if it comes out, works out to a very large fee.
But I think your question is, is it a percentage you can carry forward?
Oh, um...
Or is it dollars?
It's dollars based on what you spend, I think you can carry a year's worth of your average spending for the past four years, or something like that, I'm not certain on that, but it's something along those lines.
Can we use it for inspectors? Because I'm, I constantly get calls from people saying, yeah, I'm waiting for the Winter Park inspector, so maybe before we reduce all our fees, we might wanna add an inspector, just a thought.
That's a, that's a, certainly a legitimate use.
Outsource that, so it doesn't have to have long-term benefits, but if that fluctuates, maybe there's a way to spend some of it instead of giving it back, it's an idea.
Right. Investment earnings, you know, you can, if you look at that, it swings all over the place, it's a, it comprises both interest earnings that we receive, as well as changes in market value. Changes in market value are what drive the wild fluctuations here. So you see, for fiscal 18, we were in a rising interest rate environment at that time, and so we, the negative, the unrealized loss that was in our portfolio at that time drove, took away all the interest earnings and brought it very close to zero. And now in the current year, as we are seeing declining interest rates in the market, the values of our fixed-rate portfolio appreciate, they look better, they look more attractive, so people are willing, would be willing to pay more for them, so... So people are willing, would be willing to pay more for them. So it's, um, it's an unrealized lost gains in the current year. And also, as securities get closer to their maturity date, they also appreciate to their par value. So if you've got a million-dollar bond, it's gonna be worth a million dollars at its maturity date. Golf course, I made a little mistake in the report that I put together. I was a little optimistic in the revenue projections that I had in there. I said there would be about $215,000 greater than estimate. I didn't adequately take into consideration that summer months are a little bit, they don't get the same level of play as the more comfortable fall and spring days do. So I think it'll be about $150,000 better than our, our budget estimate. It'll still be a very good year for the golf course, but that nice margin between revenues and expenses will tighten up, uh, as the year round, near its completion.
And how much total have we invested in the golf course in the last three years?
I'm not sure offhand on that. You know, the main, the big improvement we did was about a 1.2 million. I think we spent a little more than that, but...
And I think we spent $90,000 this past year, so.
So you think we're under $2 million?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I just played Saturday. It was nice. I shot well.
Right. So we ended fiscal eighteen with a general fund, unassigned fund balance, which we generally refer to as reserves, of about 13 and a half million. I think we're gonna be somewhere around 14.3 million at the end of 9/30/19, or about 26 and a half percent. Water and sewer fund?
I have a quick question for that, if you'll go back to it. Is there any requirement that, we just mentioned the requirement that you, uh, can't carry forward, but, you know, the percentage you can carry forward. Is there any requirement that anybody else has on us? We've always been aiming towards 30% in this. Do we, is there any requirement about what you can or cannot carry forward?
I don't think, I can't think of any limitation on how much you can carry forward in unrestricted fund balance.
There, there are other restricted revenues that have to be used for certain purposes, like the gasoline tax can only be used for transportation, that, that type of thing.
Right.
You wanted to carry forward fifty, you know, if you wanted 50%, you could. It's just limited by what we dream up. Okay.
Some cities are at 100% or better.
Not many.
No.
I haven't seen many.
And I'm not sure that's a good idea, but...
You'd be surprised that we're debt-free?
Water and sewer operations are looking very good. We have a very strong bottom line there. It's quite comparable to the pri, where we were last year at this point, about $1.4 million, 225 debt service coverage is very good, and 125 is the minimum. In electric, we think we're going to be very close to our annual target for kilowatt-hour sales. Our bottom line there, um, we think we, you know, these July, August, September, this, the negative you see there for the net change for the nine months should, should come closer to even. So I think we'll look very good there, and very good debt service coverage-wise, too. Our cash balance will not be as pretty. Um, we have some larger receivables outstanding that we probably will not collect by 9/30. Uh, we have about 755,000 outstanding with FEMA and the state that's related to Hurricane Irma recovery efforts. Um, we've also incurred about a million dollars in cost on our Fairbanks project that we built, will build to FDOT, so that may not be in by September 30th, since that's not very far away. Um, also, we recently, a couple of weeks ago, we made a payment to Duke Energy of about $530,000 as part of our agreement for buying service territory in Ravinage. So that will be, um, a cash drain. It'll be a future investment in revenues. We'll have the ongoing revenues and that customer base from now on. Um, there will be future payments, uh, that we have to make to Duke as part of that agreement, um, as well. But like I say, that'll be, um, we'll get the benefit of the future revenues there.
As you may recall, that, that agreement called for us paying two and a half times gross revenue for each new customer that's picked up in Ravinage that would have been Duke customers.
Right. Two and a half times their revenues for their first 12 months.
So is Ravinage building out as rapidly as you projected when you made that decision? To make that investment?
When we made that decision.
I, I'd have to go back and look at the original projections, but, but, uh, you know, the mix is a lot different than we originally projected. You know, we don't have near the office bases. Right, right.
I, I noticed that, um, your little write-up talked about the decorative lighting. Do we have a lot more requests from neighborhoods than we're able to satisfy?
Dan will better be able to understand that, but I think we've had to...
I noticed you mentioned it, so I just wondered if there was, uh, is this an ongoing problem, or is this challenge, opportunity?
Oh, yeah, it's a waiting list right now.
There is a waiting list, okay. So if, how much money would you need to be able to do what people are asking you to do? You know, is that?
I can't quantify right now. We get a request, and we just, we say, we're putting you in the queue, and then we design it as it comes closer. So we're not wanting to go and say, I'm looking for the...
So are we, are we waiting a long time? I mean, are people waiting a long?
Well, so the challenge is...
I mean, it's exciting. They participate in that, right? They pay back.
They do. But we, we front the money, and then they pay it back over time. Right. Or is it, it's not 30 years, is it?
It's not that long. Uh, it's more like...
10?
More like 10.
Yeah.
I would be interested in seeing how many, how many things are in that queue, because that might be a place where we could, we could make a difference if we could accelerate that, just because nobody wants to get in a queue, so to speak, be, speak, and be in a waiting list if we can help it.
I would just go back to the, um, just emphasize our poor cash position in the electric fund.
You say that. But we did just move a million dollars in there, didn't we?
Uh, that's been two, three years ago, yes.
Felt like yesterday.
But Wes, and, you know, my question is more of, if we get another hurricane coming through here, we, you know, what's our cash options? Because last time, you know, Dave, Dave Zusi wasn't happy with our cash options. Is that where we're heading if we get another hurricane?
Sure. We have, we operate under what's called a pooled cash system. We, we would front the money out of the, the other operating funds to, to cover the, the storm. It would be paid back over time.
Yes.
But we got all these portable generators, right? We already bought them?
We purchased them, we haven't received them.
Isn't that not one reason we have a 25%? I mean, that's why it's there, people. It's not there just to say you got it. It's there to use it.
That's exactly right.
So, that's all I've got.
Well, that's kind of a Dan/Wes question, but I mean, if you tell me we spent a million dollars' worth of work on Fairbanks, that's a million dollars' worth of undergrounding that's happening in and around the city, but not part of our undergrounding. Are we...
Right. It's not in our service territory. So those are actually Duke customers.
Well, some are ours, right? Like the ones right adjacent to the road, and then the ones behind.
No, all of, all of that is, all of that is Duke. Some of it's distribution, some of it's transmission. So that technically, the transmission is serving us, that we're putting underground. But it's not, it's not going to a customer directly.
It's not something the residents would see as us making progress in their plan.
That's correct.
So...
It's in the city limits.
That's correct.
Is it causing us to have to slip your schedule for getting the undergrounding done?
There's a little bit, but not much. We intended for that to work at night. So there's, they'd be working in parallel paths. It's a little sliverish, but not much.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Wes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, so citizen comments will be at five o'clock. It's 4:43. Um, so let's just move forward with the consent agenda item number 10.
I'll move it.
Like to pull C2.
Is there any other, any other areas we'd like to pull before we move it?
Yes, 10C2.
Okay. Sarah, you okay?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, so with that one pulled, um, we will vote for the remaining consent agenda.
Citizen comment?
Citizen comment on the, uh, the other items on the consent agenda. That would be all, all items except for 10C2. Seeing no comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now the, um, 10C2, let's have some discussion.
This is, um, for the resource officers at the schools. And, and I noticed that, um, I'm sure Glen Ridge and Maitland Middle, uh, since they're middle schools, are probably the most important places. I'm assuming those are in Orlando's budget and in Maitland's budget, but I just wanted to confirm, we do have resource officers in the middle schools.
That is correct.
Perfect. And, and I don't know if everybody knows this, but our police department stepped up and, and the city of Winter Park provided resource officers way before anybody insisted that they do so, or figure out how they were gonna be paid, because they knew it was the right thing to do. And I just wanna say thank you to Randy, and thank you to Chief Deal about that. And, and I would move to approve C2.
I had a quick question. I noticed that...
Do we have a second first, or?
I'll second.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. Um, I noticed that some of the resource officers, the billing rate was 49K, and then for Orange Tech, it was 72K. Is that because of the hours?
The, uh, Orange Tech is a detail, it's a special detail. They don't have a full-time SRO of the school, so we use our 82 sausage. That money is allocated annually to that detail. The other is the, they pay reverse us for having a full-time SRO of the school.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, any public comment on item 10C2? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Uh, next item is, uh, item 11, uh, the discussion of potential fiscal year 20 budget. And, uh, we'll do public comments after that, if it doesn't too long to think of.
True. So what I'm passing down is the spreadsheet, I believe that was in your packet.
It was bigger, it's still small.
Yeah. Yeah, Peter's still not as old as I am, so he hasn't learned I need bigger print.
Yeah, man, you need to work on it, you need to work.
Either that, or we need an older budget officer. I'm not sure which.
That's right.
Can I get a clarifying question answered? We had a, a parent who called us or sent us an email about a child who was struck at the corner of Audubon, when they were going to Audubon Elementary School. Do we, um, have crossing guards, still for Brookshire on Lakemont? Now, we have one at Lakemont on Lakemont. Do we have crossing guards anywhere for Audubon Park in Winter Park?
We, we do not have any crossing guards for Audubon Park, because that, that Corinne Crossing is in Orlando's jurisdiction.
Do they have a crossing guard?
Yes, they do.
So the, the child can cross the Big Road Corinne with a crossing guard. The only place they could not cross would be if they were crossing Old Winter Park Road. Is that correct?
If they're crossing Winter Park Road before they get to the city limits, that's correct. If they get it, if they go all the way down to Corinne, I believe that crossing guard would cross them either, either direction. If they, if they go all the way to Corinne before they try to cross Winter Park Road.
We still have a crossing guard for Brookshire on Lakemont, too, right? Okay. Thank you.
People have, have comment on this? Before we get into the discussion, Randy?
Yeah, would you like Peter to walk you through what's on the spreadsheet here, give you an update? This is, this includes all the comments that we received from city commissioners, as well as some staff recommendations that have, based on information that we've gotten since July 1st, when the budget was presented.
They just found some money and then they spent it. That's where they ever got to.
All right. Let's hear from Peter. Thank you.
All right. Well, the good news is, I do think my eyesight's going, so maybe next year, this will be slightly larger print. So I apologize, yes. Uh, so what we've got is we've got commission comments that we've received. Those were in that, in that matrix. We've also put in anything that was sort of new data since we presented the budget to you in July. Obviously, first off, off the bat, the state revenue estimates are provided by the state of Florida every year. We make our best guess going into that process. However, we typically, if we see a large delta between what we had estimated and what they come out with, we typically request an amendment to their numbers. So the, the long story short on that was, uh, we were too conservative on sales tax and too bullish on communication services taxes. You've also seen from Wes's presentation. They pretty much net out pretty close. If you adopt the state estimates, all four that we have listed in your budget, uh, packet here, you're up about $107,000. The, uh, school resource officer section, this has to do with the good work of PD negotiating their deal with the county. We're gonna end up about a net 50K ahead as part of the agreement that I believe you all just passed. We had mentioned in the presentation to the commission about cybersecurity. Uh, in fact, I think Texas just got 23 cities were just hit, actually, by a mass ransomware attack. This is becoming an increasing concern. Uh, I know IT and management have been talking about, um, looking at adding additional personnel to try and address that issue. And that was sort of a, a late addition as we were looking through the budget process. And so we think the net...
Peter, excuse me. Do you have an overhead for the audience to review this budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, you can squint along with us. The, the good news is, they can blow yours up, so you could actually...
People wanna blow my stuff up all the time.
I would just appreciate, as you go along, if you would talk about the, the net change, like the 107 minus the 85 now, which is, how we, and if the dollars are general fund dollars, that's okay. But if they are general fund dollars, I'd like to know, because when I add this up, I have more asks than I have dollars, so.
I think between what we get, and depending on which commission, um, items we look at, I think there were a lot where we'd have to do a little more investigation or study on what those price impacts would be. Um, but ones that have clearly been defined that would affect the general fund, such as the cybersecurity at 85. Um, I look, I think we have some parks items for 10K, for weeds at Mead, and the library request of 56K. Um, we're netting out pretty flat with the net ups and the net downs, because you're gonna pick up about $157,000 between the PD item and taking the state revenue estimates. And then you're gonna lose 85 plus 56 plus 10. You're gonna get pretty close to net where we already were. So...
I just like, I understand the math as we go, because pretty close has never worked in the past. Depending on whose ass it is, so.
Before you, and before you get away from the school officers, are you telling me that we're gonna make money on that deal?
No, this is, no, this is just over what we originally budgeted.
So it's, it is the same?
Right. We're, we're getting more, we're getting more per officer than we got in prior years, and we budgeted more closely to what we got in prior years.
So we, this is a wash. I just wanna make sure, okay?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, the, the fact, you know, what we ended up with is contingency at the end of our last discussion.
Sure. So in your contingency budget right now, you have $931,000. That's currently made up of $319,000, which is, by policy, that's that half of 1% of revenues in the general fund. You've got $316,000, which is the placeholder for commuter rail, which in some past years, the commission has decided to reallocate towards other, other projects or initiatives. Uh, and then you have $296,000 in what we would call surplus contingency right now, that we provided in the proposed budget to address things as they would come along.
So that, that 296 is really what we have to gain off of that?
Right. 296, plus or minus whatever you're adding if you adopt the state estimates or not. It's probably the primary variable. Uh, water and wastewater interlocal, we just received from the South Seminole and North Orange County Wastewater Treatment Authority, their updated estimates for what we transfer from our water utility, so it's non-general fund, non-general fund dollars, um, to them for processing our wastewater. Uh, Randy, my understanding is that number's a lot higher this year because of new capital projects that they're bringing online.
That, that's correct.
So when we brought our budget for the wastewater forward, we had about $190,000 contingency in there. Uh, we had estimated we were probably going to get an increase. We just weren't sure what it was. We are suggesting that all of that, I mean, it's in our local agreement, we have to, is going to be used for that, uh, project.
Contingency was on just that line, not on the entire water sewer fund, just that one?
No, it was contingency for the entire water and sewer fund. No, it was contingency for the entire water and sewer fund. We're using it all. Which, we typically don't provide a contingency in our water and sewer fund.
Because we have a healthy carryforward fund balance.
Correct.
Did we increase it last year with the rates?
Uh, rates were, did we flatten it? I think, believe we did make the PSC increase to rates this current year. We are proposing it in this year's budget as well. Uh, if you did not use the PSC suggested rate increase, we would have to find about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the water utility. So it's a big, it's, it's a big chunk for them. Uh, as you heard from the Palaschik Museum and then also from the Housing Authority, um, I believe also Commissioner Cooper brought forward the Palaschik item as well in her list. Uh, you also heard their presentations as well. Um, the pool of funds that we provide, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars is about what it comes to for fiscal FY twenty for outside operating support. Uh, we do have twenty-three thousand dollars left in that. We're suggesting, uh, that you could, uh, afford what the Palaschik is asking through that. Uh, and then regarding the Housing Authority, um, you do have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and it has adequate funding that could be used, uh, to support this purpose. It would fall within that parameter.
That number surprised me just a little bit. Um, have we stopped collecting? Do we have a moratorium on collecting affordable housing fees?
Yes, you still have the ordinance, but you set the fee at zero. The reason that number grew from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand was the mandated contribution to affordable housing from Rava Daj.
Uh, got it, okay. Um, just for a future item, can we look at some, um, options about things that we can and cannot do with that money? I'd like to see us putting it to good use-
Certainly.
-for affordable housing if we can. Excuse me, Peter.
And I believe that's it for the staff suggested changes to the budget.
Finished what's your net on take and put?
So in general fund, we're going to be up fifteen, twenty-two. You'll be up seventy-two if you adopt the cybersecurity and you adopt the police and you adopt the state revenue estimates.
So we get seventy-two more to deal with?
To the general fund.
Thank you. That was for you to spend, I think, on your line item.
I knew I should have brought my calculator up to the desk.
Right, place. Seventy-two K, we got seventy-two K to talk about.
Any more questions on the staff side, or can I transition to commission items?
Um, you know, Peter, just from the, um, you know, what you put here today is kind of your update of what is what's going on with staff. And it kind of seemed that some of these, um, you know, are we going to go line item by line item and say yes, yes, yes? Or, okay, so, so do we want to go through Peter's items right now before he?
Well, I think we should, we'll see everything on the table before we go through that, because I don't want, and I, and is cybersecurity, the eighty-five thousand dollars, is that just like a good number? Or where did that come from?
We're estimating that based on what the position starting rate would be plus benefits cost.
That's in addition to one full-time position.
So you're talking about hiring somebody else?
Yes.
That's correct.
We don't want to add any more manpower, but in that area, I'm not sure it would make sense to be farming that out. I don't know how comfortable.
I don't know how another person's going to stop at that anyway, from what I understand, so, I don't know. I think, I think we need it, but I don't know if it's going to be a person.
Is that how they're stopping it?
Well, absolutely, I mean, the, the amount, the amount of time we currently spend, we, we have an employee already dedicated almost full-time to this. And so the amount of time we spend going through, and, and it's, it's above my head, right? When we're talking about this kind of stuff, but, I mean, going through this, the, the different spam blockers, making sure every, every protection software is up to date on a daily basis. And, I mean, it's, it's all of that type of thing, you know? When, when they push a new fix through for a specific software, making sure that gets loaded right away because there's some threat that they found in that software. So it's a daily occurrence of going through all those softwares and making sure all of our protections are in place. The number of threats they stop on a daily basis is unreal, it's in the, that, tens of thousands.
Yeah, Sarah, I could just, our business, we didn't add folks, we hired folks on to handle it because, because the threats are out there. So doing something is, right, and, and what's the right thing to do? For us, it was to outsource.
I, I understand the need for it, and it's still, we can't stop this one person who keeps getting through, can't we?
All right, so, um, what I'm hearing then is that we'll go through all of them, then we'll come back and have a discussion, go line item by line item. Yeah, and then, Todd, you want to have a, a short recess, just for a few minutes? Um, can you, can you step away and come back, or, okay? Um, in the meantime, we'll just, we'll keep, um, kind of talking about, Sarah, what you got here and-
You want me to do it or is he going to do it?
I, I'm happy to do it either way, if, if the commissioner suggests we'd like to bring his-
Yeah, with Peter's advice, we let Peter talk through it, talk through the impacts, you can add.
I'll be able to explain what I think, but.
Okay, yeah, Peter, you just want to read through them and we'll add comment as we see fit.
Sure. Um, Commissioner Sprinkle, we'll get to the ones that you submitted. Uh, this first is for weeds at Mead Gardens. This was to provide funding to address weeding issues at the gardens. Uh, my understanding is we do have some funding that's set aside. It's pending approval of the lease agreement, a final approval with, uh, Mead Botanical Gardens on that. Um, however, to address some of those immediate issues, Parks is estimating about ten thousand dollars to add that to their maintenance budget as part of weed remediation out there at the site.
So let me tell you why it's here and why I don't think it should be here, okay? In the past, we've had people that were dedicated to doing that, and they mowed and they edged and they weeded. And now we've taken it and we are farming it out to a company, and they edge and they mow, they don't weed. Well, weeding is necessary in Florida. And so I just think that it's something that should have been in that original contract, and maybe it was an oversight or whatever. So to put it here and to take it out of that little bit of money we have puts it in a kind of a tough spot, because that's something that we've been doing as a city and we need to keep doing as a city. If we need to take it out of this money, it's better than not taking it, but it should be in the upkeep of, of that from Parks and Rec for me.
So, Sarah, this is just for the main areas that they mow, not like the areas down by the trail where the wetland is and everything, right?
It's, it's what they do on their contract basis, so, that's the, I, I just brought it forward because when I was there, I saw the weeds, and if you're going to be having a wedding over there or wherever, whatever you're doing, you don't want weeds sticking up. So that's why it's happening, because the guys who do my yard mow, edge and weed. And that's a very common thing. Our contract for the new people does not include weeding.
So have we, um, spoken to Mead Gardens, or we're in charge of this contract? Because I, this is kind of one of those-
We have, we have spoken with Mead Gardens, and, and Commissioner Sprinkle's correct. It should have been part of the contract. It, it wasn't, this is adding it back. We're still saving money over when we did it in-house. So, but this should have been, and it would have been part of the base budget. It'd have been ten thousand dollars higher had we done it before. So this, this would get us where we, where we need to be.
Is there a reason why staff would prefer it to be folded into the, um, discussions of the lease agreement? I noticed you said you were waiting for the lease agreement. Is this, would it be nice to have this not, not included until after the lease agreement or as part of the lease agreement, or, I just don't know what you're negotiating?
We're, we're continuing-
Issues are?
Well, there's a lot of issues. We're continuing to work with, with, with Mead to try to, to try to come up with new agreement. We're looking at different ways, whether it should be a lease agreement or a lease agreement and an operating agreement. Uh, and there's, there's issues, uh, they're working through with the city attorney also on some of the language, so it's, it's been difficult to get that to the finish line, and so this is a temporary.
I haven't seen Mead's, um, operating budget in a long time, so I don't really understand where the money that we give them goes. Um, I'm fine with this if it's something that we need to do, but if staff would like to, to hold it as part of the lease agreement, I'm fine with that too.
I, I would not be in favor of keeping, tying the lease agreement with this at all. This is simply how we keep that park up, that's all it is. And we are, in the past, we have kept it up with weeding, mowing and edging. We need to move forward doing the same thing. It's just that we didn't put it in the, the contract with the people that we hired to do it.
Okay, so this is more of not how we're spending the money, but that we are spending the money, correct? Okay. All right, and so, uh, let's, let's move on to the next item there, Sarah.
All right, the next item is the, uh, library card system that Sabrina came and spoke about at the DIAS earlier under budget comments. It's the fifty-six thousand dollars, uh, as a one-time contribution in addition to our operating support this year to help fund that expense.
I asked that be put in because it's a big-ticket item for one year to go into a, somebody's budget and from an IT standpoint, to be ready for a move and to be ready to, to continue to stay in, on top of this. They need that new system in place. And I would rather it be a line item, this one does belong as a line item, as opposed to just increasing the budget and asking them to try to work it out. Because this is a kind of a technology increase, much like we did when we did ERP and other things that we've done here at this table. So I'd like us to look at it in that line.
Peter, do we know if this system, um, has periodic updates that are billable? I, I'd like to know if it is a, truly a one-time thing, because data management systems that I've used, you know, we have to upgrade them quite often and sometimes yearly.
From, from city support standpoint, what we're just asking for is to fund the one-time capital. So we also give them operating support every year, so they would have to accommodate those kind of needs as part of that out of their operating budget. Um, but certainly Sabrina can answer any of the technical questions about the actual system.
Oh, that's a good answer.
So is this a, um, this is part of the responsibility, we're going to take over anyway, the new library? Are we going to take over all their IT things? I haven't gotten a clear understanding of that yet.
We, we haven't finalized all those details, but the, the, the software that's specific to the library, they would still be responsible for the, the cost of, we, we're going to manage from an IT standpoint the, the system.
Okay, next.
We're currently up six K, Commissioner. Uh, the, uh-
If all these things are-
If all these things are, correct.
So there's nothing left, okay.
Well, remember, you do have the two, remember, you do have the two ninety-six, that is the original excess contingency. Um, Commissioner Sprinkle, uh, mentioned the MLK Park Plan and asked that we'd like to see plans on rehabilitation of the Martin Luther King Park. Staff has commented the Parks Department is currently looking at the previous plan scope. Uh, the intention is to come back to, uh, you guys, and then also you guys as the CRA agency, and discuss, uh, what sort of a low, medium and high, um, look at various options that that park would be.
Strategic planning session in January?
I think that's where we're headed, yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, and then Commissioner, you mentioned a drainage plan for the city, uh, that you'd like to see a drain plan for the city where we might have issues. At the CRA, uh, agency meeting in July, we did allocate that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start master planning stormwater retention in the CRA area. Um, staff is saying that's probably a good first starting point to, to look at this. Commissioner Seidel, I know you had some similar comments under your commission items that you submitted, uh, so I think staff is still saying that our, our best bet is to, to approach it through the CRA funding first and then evaluate as, as we kind of explore that. Any further technical questions, you'll have to answer the stormwater experts.
Won't tie your hands, you're going to, you're going to follow it to logical-
Absolutely, yep.
Need, okay.
Uh, and then Commissioner Sprinkle, you mentioned Parks and Rec Bike Path and Green Spaces Plan, that you'd like to see a Parks and Rec plan that includes green spaces and bike paths. And, uh, I believe this is already being rolled into the overall transportation master plan being performed by the Planning and Public Works Departments.
And how much money is allocated for that right now?
Uh, right now, that'd be have to be handled out of their operating budgets that they've got in those areas. It's also something CRA funding could address depending on your location. Um, I believe Planning has about eighty thousand dollars in their contractual services account for next fiscal year.
As well as this is an in-house function of the new transportation planner that you approved?
Yes, thank you.
Remembering, I didn't approve a new transportation planner, I just approved the budget that said you're the one that decided it was a new transportation planner, all right? And that's great, I'm glad you decided to do that.
Especially if he comes up with a good plan for connecting green spaces and bike paths.
Uh, next, Commissioner Cooper, we've moved on to your items. Uh, the Palaschik Museum request, the twenty-three thousand, we discussed that.
It's not in here twice, though. You have it for twenty-five and she's got it for twenty-three, I'm sorry.
Yes, we were just showing that staff had received the, the request and how we could accommodate that, and, yeah.
Like, you'll, what you'll see is that, um, you and I and Greg, we're all about, you're the same thing. Isn't that nice? Isn't that good, yeah?
Uh, Commissioner Cooper, you also mentioned the stormwater master plan beyond the CRA area, and our, our comment was still the same on that one, that we could-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we can get over to Gay Road.
We're not leaving anything behind, right? Um, Commissioner Cooper, you mentioned the corridor traffic model for, uh, beyond, uh, parts of the CRA. And that the CRA budgeted one hundred K in FY twenty. I don't believe we specifically designated that. I think Commissioner, uh, Seidel had mentioned that that was about what he thought something like that would cost. We do have two hundred thousand dollars in the CRA budget for contractual services in general. And since this is seventeen ninety-two, you certainly have been storing away quite a bit of funding for that FDOT partnership project. So if you wanted to explore this sooner, we have the funding available in the CRA to do that.
Right. And, and my concern here is this is real capital investment, this is like steady, it's real hard here.
Uh, and then Commissioner Cooper, you also have the seventeen ninety-two improvements that would also be outside of the CRA area. Uh, and, and there's a, I think there's a, a couple ways of looking at this. You know, we don't know the timing of when that project is going to start for sure, so it's certainly something we can accommodate in the general fund CIP as we get close to that date. I mean, we could still be three years out, four years out.
Next year, should we be in a position to plug it in where it belongs? Is that, nothing's going to happen before then, I assume?
Definitely not before then.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's certainly a way we can look at that. There's also ways where you could look at, um, total project cost would also involve in-kind services from the general fund, and so that's kind of what we did for denning. So CRA dollars were used for materials that got deployed throughout the entire strip, even though some of that was outside of the CRA. And in-kind services as a contribution to the general fund could be looked at. So there's some ways that we can look at-
And when you do that, you create a developer agreement, kind of, an interlocal or something? Okay, thank you.
Peter, excuse me just a second, I wanted to ask, um, Greg a question here. Do you see any clash between us doing a, a traffic model of seventeen ninety-two and what FDOT is currently undertaking?
No, I don't, because the, uh, we've gotten, um, Randy and I met with the current consultant project manager that's doing the FDOT work, and they're doing the modeling for the FDOT on, on their portion. And so what we're trying to do is have them supplement their model with the city portion, and then the city would contribute what we need to contribute. And, so it's, so they know what's going on because that contact who's a consultant, they'd be, it, it would, work done through the DOT, but we're providing funds for them to do the city portion. Really what we want to be looking at within the model is, is not just get the model up to know what, what's going on, but then what improvements can they put in the model? And that's where kind of at the moment, I think we have an estimate to put together the existing, um, model, which I forwarded to Randy in, uh, bronze, but we haven't had a chance to sit down and go back through that. And, and again, I hate to say we're waiting for the transportation planner to get involved, but, but that's kind of, you know, that's, um, that's what the intent is. And then the follow-up to that is, you know, we really can't start construction until I four's done. Um, they're not going to do, they're not going to do work on seventeen ninety-two, I four's going on. So the, the, and then, you know, I would feel really bad if we went out to Fairbanks right after we open up Fairbanks and do some more work on it. So there's some timing things here, but the intent is, how can we, um, uh, work with the DOT and, uh, plug to the chamber here? They're having the, the luncheon where, um, the FDOT IT guru is going to be at that chamber luncheon, so we can ask him questions and you guys can find out what the DOT is doing specifically and how we can work together, as they always say, we're not here by ourselves. How do we work together to get these things done? So this is to help, you know, add some funds to that, and we really won't know projects or project costs until that modeling is done, and then we make the, uh, decisions as to what we want to do. And there can be several options and different costs, and we can, as a commission, can decide, well, we're willing to chip in this, and the DOT may have funds available also once that's done, but we, we won't know that until that modeling is completed.
Thank you.
Uh, did you remove the one thirteen, seven fifty then for a later day? Or is it still in there for consideration? For seventeen ninety-two?
I think what the, I think what I'm-
Hearing them say is that, um, those were actually the, the mast arms, I think, at those two intersections. That was what that value was. And I think what they're saying is that's not going to happen in this next year. Is that fair?
Yes.
We're saying not this year, correct.
It's not coming out of our positive six that we have so far. All right, the next item, Commissioner Cooper, was transportation impact fee for commercial development. State of Winter Park does not collect transportation impact fees or multimodal fees for impacts of new development on our roads or multimodal facilities. Uh, staff's comment was that review of this impact fee could be considered as part of the work being done on a mobility fee. The county led effort also to look at a, uh, one cent sales tax, it also- The county-led effort also to look at a one-cent sales tax would also maybe impact this consideration because that would be funding that's dedicated solely for transportation.
I, I hope we're going to help some in educating people about what that's going to mean to us if it passes.
Yes, Clarissa is working with their communications team to.
Oh, good. Because you know, and, and I know everybody up here, all we hear about is traffic congestion. And I know that Penny's going to go for so many other things, but I think the thing that people pick up the phone about is traffic congestion. So hopefully we can.
Mayor Demings has a presentation that I, I saw the other day on it. If you haven't had a chance to see his presentation, I suggest you, next time we see him.
Actually, it's going to be an ongoing thing. He's going to have multiple town halls that you can attend. And the League of Women Voters is intimately involved in that, too.
And some of those town halls will be in Winter Park, so.
Okay. Next item, Commissioner Cooper, you submitted was establish commercial parks usage or impact fee. And you said that the comprehensive plan policy requires all new development to pay its fair share of costs to acquire new parks, and that we currently only assess that on residential properties in excess of 10 units. I can read.
Is that still valid?
Peter, is that still valid?
I, I.
Are we only collecting on, you know, it's been a while. And I, I know Dory made numerous changes. We had, I don't know if we lost that, it's, it's still there, I believe.
I don't know.
Yeah, it's still collecting on home, new residential units.
Thank you.
And what is that, every year? Do we have a found money that we get for that yearly?
I think the number in, in Bronson, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's $5,000 per new, net new residential unit is.
25, 26?
Oh, it's 2,000. Jeff's saying it's 2,000.
Oh, Jeff's.
All right.
What do we sign?
$2,000 for net new residential unit.
Is it only?
Is it only for over 10 units? Or is it every net new unit? Wonderful. So, so the purpose of this recommendation is to say that it's not just our single-family residents that are using our parks. If you go out there anytime during the day, people who work in downtown Winter Park are enjoying these same parks like we are. And this actually came as an original recommendation from the WRT study that they did a few years ago. And one of the suggestions that she made was that perhaps we start to assess a fee on our commercial properties also. So that's what I've been trying to bring to the attention of the Commission for numerous years, just quietly, subtly putting it in here, hoping you'll think about it. But I would like for us to think about, and I'll ask at the end of the meeting, whether we're willing to have three nods to ask, to have this looked at and analyzed. So that's all.
Commissioner Cooper, could you, do you have any ideas on how that would be scheduled? You know, the unit size per square foot, or?
You know, I can find some examples that we could look at, some samples of the way other people do it. I assumed that it would be done the same way we do our residential, which is by the unit, but, but that may not make sense for commercial. So let me, yeah, I can try to bring something back about that. But I think my issue was just bringing the awareness up to say, is that something that we want to pursue? And if we do, then I would ask staff to bring us back different options and examples.
Yeah, I agree. Our parks are assets for any commercial property, so you got my nod on that.
You, you don't have my nod on that. You didn't have it last year either. And you'll never get it on that one.
It's all right, I understand.
Well, here's, here's what I would offer up, though, is that, and when we do this, this greenways and, you know, parking rec, bike path and green spaces, that's going to require some funding. So we need to figure out what the options are. And if, you know, if the one-cent sales tax you're talking about, if we can get money from the county for that, you know, let's, let's look at those options. But I don't think we kind of look at, you know, if we're going to look at funding, let's make it for something and then figure out the best way to, to, to get it. And that could be one of the things, place of things that's available. But let's wait, because there may be some alternatives that the developers could do also, so.
And, and Sarah, when we get to actually having this conversation, I am very interested in, in understanding how you feel and why you feel that way. And, and perhaps, you know, perhaps there's a place in the middle somewhere where we could come down, but.
I, I think that part of my frustration is that this begs a plan, and we don't have one, and we haven't had one, and we have to get a plan before we can go ask people to fund it. That is exactly what I heard Greg just say.
Right.
And that's, I know what you say, because you, because that's what you.
Well, only because the poor Parks Board has tried to get the money for a master plan for years, you know.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing. I just want the plan first before I go ask people to fund something. I don't think that with the one cent that's for transportation that's going on in the county right now, that this is a good time to go hit people with another something. That's just, that's just what I think.
This is, this is applied just to new commercial development, you know? Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
The next, apologies. The next item Commissioner Cooper had was regarding new vehicle purchases being upgraded to electric vehicles. Staff's comment is that we, we do look into this. This is, this is interesting. This is something that we've been possibly exploring with the Building Department, because we have the restricted building funds to be able to do that easily. The issue has more to do with the feasibility of the types of equipment that we have. So we, you know, sedans have, have done that transition fairly well, but heavier trucks and things like that, certainly construction equipment, those areas we're continuing to look at.
Diesel engines, it'd be a good year to look at diesel engines, given the Volkswagen settlement. But my, my question about that is how many passenger vehicles are we buying in this budget?
I believe we're doing 14 replacements this year, but the majority of that is cop cars, which I think are now in SUV format. I believe that's 10 of them. I can get that free confirmed.
Okay. So we're only talking about four cars? And are any of those four in the Building Department?
Some of those may be heavy construction equipment. No, we're, we're currently not replacing any of the building ones, at least proposed for our fleet replacement this year. But it's certainly something that if you wanted to look at.
So, so if I felt strongly about us starting to convert to electric vehicles, and can you give me a number of what that upgrade would cost that's not in this budget?
Yes, we can take a look at that and come back to you.
Okay. But aren't we going to make a decision today?
Well, you can still make budget amendments. What, the decisions you make today, we will factor into the budget ordinance that you consider at first reading on, at the next meeting. But you can still make budget adjustments at either of those two meetings.
Okay, I just didn't want to lose the opportunity to try to do something.
Sure, I think from a staff standpoint, we're always trying to look at how we can do that. You know, sedans, those are certainly a more likely area. Typically, it's about a 5K toggle per car for something like that. But that's something we can get with fleet and see.
Do we have any electric vehicles now that are owned by the city?
Yes, we have a couple. I believe we have, is it two in the Building Department? Or one?
They're in the Building Department? I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Peter.
Uh, yes, sorry, there's, I believe there's two in the Building Department.
And that's because we have dedicated funding there that's available, okay.
I, I'd like to talk about this a little bit more, so I've been researching this. In the city right now, just our city vehicles use 200,000 gallons of diesel and gasoline every year. And if you look at the greenhouse gases just from our small city fleet, this is a big deal. And, you know, we're talking about saving our tree canopy, they're the lungs of our world. This is a good way to augment that. And four years ago, when we adopted our Sustainability Action Plan, this was part of it. And things have changed. Tesla now makes a $40,000 four-door sedan. We're not in Riverside County, this is a very small city. There's really no reason that 50% of our vehicles can't be changed over fairly quickly and economically. It's not, you know, the sticker shock just isn't there anymore. And when you factor in the maintenance costs and the fuel costs, it's a bargain and the payback is very quick, just a couple of years. And, you know, we're talking about getting our city on, equipped with vehicle chargers, this is a good way to do it. And so, like I said, they, there are multiple cities now that are using Model 3 police cars. And if you've got a, you know, a bar fight to break up and you need, you know, the, the big SUV, you know, we can get on the radio and do that. But the other thing I wanted to mention is Commissioner Cooper talked about the shuttle from the train station around Park Avenue. And so for Bluebird, who makes school buses, they have 100 orders for electric school buses now. So, you know, these things are scaling up both in volume and size. A local company I used to work for, Q's, they make electric camera inspection trucks now, that have solar panels, they're run entirely on batteries. And the technology's here, and we should capitalize on it. It's a savings in the long run. This isn't a, a net loss of revenue here.
I completely concur.
And the Volkswagen settlement has $116 million worth of grants that are going to be available. And the governor said he is looking for partnership. So I would love for Winter Park to be part of that partnership. So somehow, before we're finished with this discussion, I'd love to have a dollar value that is possible to apply to this line item so that we can vote on it. Thank you.
Commissioner, if I could just add here, again, this sounds like something that would be a complete transition plan and set a goal for electronic vehicles. And I don't think dropping it on Peter right now to come up with this plan in five minutes and give it back to us is.
But Peter's a smart guy.
Peter's a really smart guy. And what if we just said we want four of these vehicles to be electric or alternative fuels?
Well, I'm guessing, what I'm guessing is, knowing how Peter and the city has operated, there's probably a few other vehicles out there that should be replaced, that he's not replacing, that we're trying to maintain and get through another year if I happen to buy some more vehicles. So there may be some other vehicles that could be added if you wanted to do this, but that would be some additional cost.
So I think what we'd like to be able to do is get back with our fleet manager and look at, because we also got things like the learning curve, retraining, how much we can transition all at once and, and try and get our own in-house techs on board with that. So there's going to be a lot that's involved in that. So it makes me a little nervous to say I'm going to give you a number for this upcoming budget year. I would suggest if you're amenable to it, let's explore it through the Building Department first, because that's the easiest way to go after it. And if you wanted to make a mid-year amendment, or we wanted to explore this two months later, we can come back with a transition plan, we can do that. It's difficult to do, and I mean, we can, we can get you a number for what out of our current replacements could be electric.
Well, a lot of times we get numbers for things with, that we don't have firm plans of how we're going to do. So from my perspective, unless we have money in the budget, it's not going to be able to happen. I mean, you know, it just, it's not going to happen. And, and I do think this is a direction the city should be moving toward. I am not of the opinion that, that I need to say 50% by a certain, that's not where I'm going at all. But I'm going, if you're going to buy 14 vehicles, why couldn't one or two of them be alternative fuels?
Okay, we'll come back to that.
I don't need a big plan for that.
One other comment there. You know, last year or two years ago, I remember the Commission approved eight new police cars, and with the adjective interceptor. And, you know, we're a nine-square-mile city, and about all you can do is accelerate fast with a, with a police car. And almost any electric vehicle now will out-accelerate any interceptor ICE engine. So that's, that's not a selling point anymore either.
And that's a blessing.
ICE just means internal combustion engine, you know.
Yeah, but I, I just, I just added this note real quick and then, but Peter, I would also think from our parks and our maintenance, that getting electric equipment in the parks is now, they have electric mowers, they have all kinds of electric equipment you can use that's just as efficient as the, just as strong as the gas. And so I don't know how much of that we've looked into in that department either, but to me, that would be a part of it as well, so.
While you're talking about that, I was talking, yeah, I was talking to our sustainability people about leaf blowers. So we've had a lot of citizen comments about the noise, but most leaf blowers are two-stroke engines and they require a lot of maintenance, they put out a lot of smoke, they burn oil, and they're obnoxious. And I have an electric leaf blower and I absolutely love it, it's battery-powered. And Jason, I guess he's not here anymore, oh, hi. Yeah, I, I would like to have a meeting with you because we'd like to have a trial to see how a couple of your blowers could be.
We have two blowers that we are trialing right now.
Okay, do you know what brand they are?
Good answer.
I'm not sure.
Okay, no worries.
Still, this came out.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Sure, the next item is a circulator shuttle from Commissioner Cooper. It's add a circulator vehicle to move residents and visitors between Sunrail shopping areas and other areas of interest, pursue grants from state, complies with Sunrail Task Force and Keemly Horn recommendations. Certainly we can begin to look into grant opportunities, certainly it will be an electric shuttle. But, and then.
Autonomous.
It's even more exciting, that's right. And then also, of course, we made a comment that this is, of course, an eligible thing under the, the county-led effort to pass the one-cent sales tax. And then also your CRA would be able to do this within the CRA district. However, we were pointing out that we did recently allocate our cash reserves and contingency at our most recent agency meeting for the CRA. So this would have to be considered for future years, or we'd have to amend the current CRA budget.
So all that to say, yes, we can do it?
We can absolutely look into it.
I've been hearing that. I think I sat on this Sunrail Task Force on Transportation with Deidre McNabb a decade ago. And we all agreed and voted at that point in time that to have Sunrail without a circulator vehicle for that last mile type of movement was not the best we could do for our residents. It's fine for people who come and they only want to go to Park Avenue, but you know, I think we're a lot bigger than Park Avenue now. And we're talking about Orange Avenue, we're talking about Winter Park Village, we're talking about Florida Hospital, we're talking about Rollins, we're, you know, there, it just seems like we could do better.
Yeah, I, I think there's some opportunities there. So when you're talking about there's CRA funds available, but I also think there's opportunities, and he was kind of joking about the automated vehicle, but they're doing tests now. And if we wanted to be a test location, we might get them sooner at much less cost. So certainly be interested in pursuing some of that.
We did take this pursuant to your agency recommendation. We took it to our CRA Advisory Board last week, and they have asked us to start looking into that as well, to see how that would look. The, the issue with the circulator has always been the demand-side model. We've had a trolley before in the past, we've tried multiple public-private partnerships, none of them lasted, because there's just no demand for it. And so maybe tastes are changing, we're, we're going to see people using them. But the CRA Advisory Board was concerned about if you're going to make this investment, can we take a look at what those demand metrics might look like?
I'm very glad that they're looking at it. Because quite frankly, when you start talking about making the library parking remote, that might be, you know, the library parking in the middle of the park down Harper Avenue, you're going to need to get those people back and forth to the library because of the demographics you're dealing with. So maybe that's the place we should try to get the, the autonomous vehicle. I mean, perhaps, just as you're thinking of these things.
I did go sit in an autonomous vehicle that was using LiDAR, it is pretty stinking cool.
Polytech, did you go?
Uh, no, it's the guys over by UCF. It starts with an I and I can't remember the name.
Well, that, you know, that, I, in fact, I have a question about that.
Well, do you have any more questions on the budget? We need to.
Oh, no, yeah, sorry. Well, we're actually going to have to put money into infrastructure around our streets if we have to support autonomous vehicles.
Yeah, those are fairly new. Lake Monon is doing one called WithBeep right now, is what they're actually running. So I'll be curious to see how that one pans out. And you've got to be careful about routes and how those would look and safety and perception and all that. So I think it's probably still a little out on the autonomous vehicle to make sure we got precedent in place for us there and how it's working properly. But if we could, I would suggest the CRA Advisory Board can look into this effort, can talk with TAB, and can start looking at the demand-side model for a circulator.
So if there is no appetite to put dollars in the budget right now, does that prohibit us moving forward to try to, to do this?
No, not at all.
It's just another year away?
I think there's just investigating it and looking more into that, seeing what grant opportunities are available. And then I think also watching the county-led, you know, one cent sales tax. That would provide you...
So we're talking about not this year, is what you're saying?
I wouldn't be allocating hard dollars to it now, no.
All right. And, um, I suppose my fellow commissioners will have to vote on that at some point, right? Okay, thank you.
Hi. Commissioner Seidel, we've moved on to your items.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, Legmont Ave study. You'd asked about a Legmont Avenue roadway diet study, including conceptual plans and public meetings from the hospital to Pine Avenue. Um, we have said that this poor transportation planner who's going to be doing all our work may be able to start to address this, uh, in October 1st. Um, and then also, Public Works and Planning are getting together to determine what might be required for some sort of study like that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, 1792 corridor modeling. I think we spoke about that earlier.
Yep, thank you.
Awesome. All right, reduce the millage rate. Uh, Commissioner, this was, uh, your comment based on the staff estimate last year that if this new homestead exemption had passed, it would cost us $750,000. You'd asked what would our millage rate look like now if we needed to remove 750,000 in total, uh, property taxes. Our millage rate would go down to 3.9660. And that would also, um, result in about an 87K reduction in CRA, CRA revenues because of course it's calculated off the millage rate as well.
So where would we put our plus-minus if we included this?
Well, uh, if you wanted to take out, so right now, we're, uh, we're at about even. We're net six, but you have about 200, you still have the $931,000 in the original contingency. Taking out 750 would take you below, you'd have to take out the commuter rail piece, you'd have to take out the 296. Um, and then you'd have to take about $100,000 or so out of the, um, uh, remaining, um, budget policy contingency that you guys have in place. However, as a commission, you are able to override that policy in any given year that you want.
Okay. So you guys, I wanted to have this in here because it was something that I had brought up a couple of years ago when we first knew this law was, uh, um, going to be voted on. And I would like to sit here and say how fortunate we all are that, um, you know, we're talking about what we can add, not what we have to subtract, right? So we've got this contingency fund, but had we, you know, what I had asked staff to do was if we were getting hit with that other homestead exemption, that we didn't have to raise our revenues to cover it. So if we would have gotten hit with it this year, we wouldn't have 900,000, we would have 200,000. So I'm just trying to frame this discussion that we're talking about is, you know, um, you know, our staff did what we asked. We asked them to make sure that we wouldn't have to raise taxes if that passed. And that, you know, is it prudent for us to try and cut some of our taxes? Because we do have the increase of the, uh, library millage that's on there. And so I, I'm not giving you an exact number now, but I just want us all to be thinking about it. And I know it's going to affect some of the budgets, but as we kind of think of these things that we get to ask for, realizing that, you know, you're talking to someone that's been asking to do things for years, um, that how fortunate we are to be in this position right now. So, um, that's all I'll say about it right now.
I agree. It's a first-world problem. Um, I wanted to ask about the, the Sunrail, um, funds there. I've seen numbers, um, for our responsibility quite a bit higher than that. And are we accumulating money for the first year that we're responsible? Oh, Randy, sorry.
Yeah, that's right. No, no, we're not accumulating. Our, our obligation is capped at 375...
350.
$350,000. Uh, and then there's an equal amount, I believe, for the liability side.
If it's incurred, right.
But it has a, I think it has the same, the same cap if I'm not mistaken. But what we've done, what we've done in the budget each year is, we haven't been setting aside money for Sunrail. That's a common misconception. We've been creating a larger and larger carve-out for Sunrail for the year when we have to start paying the amount. So, so, yes, behavioral, right?
And when is that?
And so it's rolling, it's rolling into the, into contingent, into fund balance each year when we don't spend it because we're not actually spending it yet. But once, once we get to the year, which I think is 2022...
Twenty-one or twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty, one or twenty-two, when we actually have to start paying the 350,000, we will have already carved out that much out of our spending habit so that we can fund it without, without a problem. Now, this is also something that if the penny transportation sales tax passes, we believe that would cover this as the dedicated funding source. But, but that's not, that would not happen until November 2021. So, you know, it's a, it's a big, still a long shot at this point.
Well, but, it's really important that the dedicated funding source for Sunrail has always been talked about. It has never gone through and been pushed. We're getting close, and I can guarantee you, when we have to start spending $350,000, it's going to get even closer. So I do think the one cent, a saleable thing about the one cent is that it would go for the Sunrail. So I, I think that this is a great lesson for us to keep, you know, keep doing, that we should be doing just what we're doing. But we haven't spent a dime on it yet. Okay? So we have to be sure we know that's not money we've spent.
Just while we're on that topic, the other thing that I'd like us to be cautious about is, um, the $350,000 that we're addressing for liability. I think that's, um, I, I remember something happened about that, and I honestly cannot remember the details.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look at that and get back to it.
Yeah, let's get back to real...
I recall the same thing.
Yeah, I think we both, I think we need to understand that a little bit better because that, that's a big piece of the pie, the liability. And I'm hoping that went away. And for some reason, I thought it did, but I'm not sure.
You may be right.
Okay, Peter, next item, please.
Sure. Last item, sir, is your lake health analysis, uh, review of lake health analysis with recommendations for improvements for all lakes in Winter Park, review of information currently collected and what measures or actions may be needed, uh, we may need to be improving upon. Um, in Public Works, we spoke with them, and they said they'll review and return the recommendations regarding that because they already collect a fair amount of data regarding lake how, lake health, and I believe want to probably provide that to you and, and see what you think at that point and then go from there.
And this is kind of similar to the tree ordinance. It's like, what have we been doing? What can we be doing better? And, um, or is everything, we're doing good? So that's what I was looking to.
Do you mind if we throw air quality into that mix? I was a little surprised to see Orlando at the top of the list there.
I do mind.
You do? Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to dilute...
I understand that. But I would like to look at on a separate, in a separate workshop is fine, the air quality piece.
You want to bring that back up later when we have our commission talks?
I have two, two budget questions.
Absolutely.
Okay, first, what is the percentage of staff that gets merit pay right now?
Well, I mean, all, all of staff is eligible for merit pay. Typically, everyone will, will get some sort of increase and it depends upon the performance.
I need to provide you that data. I know you asked me that the other day, and I, I did not get that information yet. I'll get that for you.
I just would like to see that to make sure our staff's taken care of. I know that you have in here, that is in here because you're trying to make sure that we stay at the, at the right place for that. So I just want to make sure. Also about the health clinic that we funded, was that been in existence two years now?
I'm...
Two, three?
It just finished in our third year.
It just finished in our third year.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to know, are we going to keep that going the way it's going? Is that the way we need to keep going?
We're going to keep it going. It's worked very well. We're going to change the model slightly effective October 1, it looks like. We're, we're in the process of looking at that. We, we see some areas for improvement.
But the budget that you have in here for that, that's adequate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Peter, if you want to run through what items we currently have some agreement on, if you will, that just kind of run through, you had a number. You said we were like even at the moment?
Well, so that's, that's my presumptuous assumption that you would take the, uh, the staff suggested changes regarding state revenue estimates, the, uh, new SRO reimbursement figures, the cybersecurity position, and the water and wastewater interlocal, which of course is not affecting the general fund. Um, so let's see, my up six would include adopting our revenue adjustments that take us some to the upside, picking up the cybersecurity position, picking up the weeds, and picking up the library. And we're up a net 6K. So that puts you up at 937K in total contingency.
And that was doing the Pulashik out of...
The Pulashik out of the, out of the organizational support...
Correct.
Line item and the housing authority out of the...
Out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
That's a smart thing to do. And that, you really just put the weeds back into, into Parks and Rec.
We are in the weeds.
You're in the weeds. And then, but, but it does include the IT for, for library.
But, yeah, it included IT for the library. Yes, okay.
So the way I would sum that up is you've approved page one. And, let's see, and the first two items on page two, which were the weeds and the library ERP system. So after that, we were sort of in discussions of further studies and finding more information or using some existing paths to pursue some of those things.
Yeah, I get, I'm looking at the, um, commission here. But so I was trying to get, Peter, if you just kind of wanted to summarize the ones we all in agreement, do we try and do one motion for that? And...
I, I move that we, uh, accept what Peter's just mentioned and, uh, vote on it.
Do you have a second?
Do you want me to restate them? Oh, sorry.
All right. Um, I will go ahead and, uh, second that. And then I'll ask, just like on the agenda, is there any items you'd like to pull on here for discussion? Um, like your electric vehicles. Will you have a separate discussion on that?
Yeah.
Okay. So you want to move that to include it?
Yes, I would like to include some, and I do not have a specific dollar value, some dollar value that you can deal with, to start implementing our commitment to electric vehicles.
Okay.
Well, what do you have in there for those 14 new vehicles? I mean, that, I mean, maybe you already have it in there. You just reallocated it, or maybe you add 20 or, you know, something. Just put one car.
So do you want to make a motion that two of the vehicles purchased be electric vehicles?
Do that. Yes, I will move that two of the vehicles purchased be electric vehicles.
That can be a part of the whole motion as far as, I just don't want to get into telling them what to buy. Okay?
We'll, we'll call it an amended motion?
Big one.
Do it all as one. So, uh, Peter, if you could indulge me, um, and we've got three pages here. So if you just start with the first item and say whether or not it's included, and we can put a check next to it so we have a good idea of everything that we're including.
Yes, sir. Okay. So on the first page, state revenue estimates changes, check. Police school resource officers, check. Cybersecurity IT position, water and wastewater interlocal, Pulashik museum.
These are all checks, right?
These are all checks. Housing authority, Mead Garden, everything on the first page, yes. Mead Garden weeds.
Check.
Library ERP.
Check.
We had mentioned MLK Park Plan that we're reviewing that. So I'm assuming you all are content with that review and we'll bring that back to you.
Yes.
We'll say pseudo-check. Uh, drainage plan for the city. We'd mentioned CRA's funding. We're going to bring back, uh, those for you through the CRA, and then we can look at that in the future. Um, Parks and Rec bike path, that's going to be part of the overall transportation master plan and why our new transportation planner will never speak to us. Uh, Pulashik museum, we got. Stormwater master plan that we've sort of talked about. Uh, corridor traffic model. I don't have clarity from you all on whether you want to move forward on this now, but our staff statement is you have funding in the CRA to pursue this if you want to do it.
Yeah, I would, I would say we use the CRA funding.
I'm seeing a yes. All right, yeah.
But what I was trying to do, Sarah, is anything that's going to be dollars in this budget amount right now?
Right, I got it.
So we're, yeah, so this one is to be determined, and there's no, okay, got it. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So then we're now on the last page.
Yes, because I think Commissioner Cooper, we said we would talk about funding the things outside of the CRA for PD&E when we get closer to that, whatever that start point might be. Um, we said we could review transportation impact fee as part of, uh, the mobility fee study. Um, we had the established commercial parks usage impact fee. I believe we're going to look into some methodology options and what other places are...
When we have something to fund, we'll look at that alternative.
Okay. Uh, new vehicle purchases. I believe I just heard we're going to do at least two of our new vehicles purchased will be electric.
Yes. So that'll be included as part of that.
Two electric vehicles.
Okay.
I like at least two.
At least two. We, we will, we will take a look at what we can, what we can do. If it's more, it'll be more. Uh, I have a little less clarity on where you want us to go with the circulator shuttle in the short term. We'd like to study it and come back to you guys to see our advisory board.
We do to be successful.
Peter, I, um, possibly we could maybe, um, put together a list of specifications for it. How many seats? Does it have air conditioning? Is it wide open like, uh, Sanford's?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's let him investigate that.
Okay, thanks.
We're having even said that's what we want yet, guys. I mean, that's just, this is a budget, but...
I just don't want to see us...
There was a time we got rid of a shuttle up here, guys. So we, we better be careful before we so add something in that doesn't get used.
Right. We want it to be successful, but we also want to be timely in order to participate in the Volkswagen dollars if they're out there.
I like how you think. Okay.
Uh, Legmont Ave study. I think we're going to come back to you with that. That'll be sort of a go-forward study. Uh, we talked about 1792 corridor modeling, reduce millage rate. I'm assuming that's going to be a separate conversation. And then lake health analysis, we sort of come back to you with information.
Okay, excellent. So, uh...
Oh, I got one suggestion. We did say on here cybersecurity IT position. I would rather not say position, just cybersecurity IT, because I, whether it's a person or it's stuff, okay?
And at, at the risk of lengthening this, you asked that we discuss hot waters at the Katy Way pool, hot water in the showers.
Yeah. Is that, is that in the plan? Do we have in our, do we have a plan to, to let, to, to put hot water in? Don't we?
The bathrooms.
The bathrooms at Katy Way?
Not, not at this point. We're heating in place, seeing how that goes, and then that would be the down the line.
We, we do have a cost from before, Troy. I don't know if you remember what that was, but it was, it was a crazy amount of money because there, I mean...
Can we look at solar?
Yeah, the issue is replumbing, you guys. It's all cold water. There's no hot water lines.
Yeah, there's no hot water lines.
So, so they'd have to add the hot water lines. Or maybe, at least maybe make like one or two showers hot, you know what I mean? Give them something.
Yeah, I do know what you mean. I don't want to get in a cold shower. So I just want us to not lose that eventually. It would be really nice if we put that in our capital. But I don't want to be, uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we do it today.
Yeah, I think if we can get some investigation and, and some options there. Anything else? All right. So Randy, do I need to take public comments now on this?
Yes, sir.
For, uh, okay, before we vote on it. So everyone's heard the discussion. If you understand or have a question on the items that we're voting on and you'd like to make a public comment, uh, anyone want to come up now? All right.
I got a quick staff question. I'm so sorry.
Yep.
How much of this is reducing the $296,000 worth of contingency?
So far, we have not. We've, we're pretty much, pretty much the same. I think we're net 6,000 up. So we're actually at 937 if I'm doing my, my math right.
Okay. And that includes the four vehicles?
Good point. We'd have to come back to you on that. But my guess is five to, five to eight K per vehicle.
Good. Okay. So it's not horrible. It's worth doing. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Randy, we should read the roll for this one?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seidel?
Yes. All right. So that concludes our budget discussion. Thank you. Um, we'll take public comments right now, and then we'll, uh, you guys want to take a short break, or do you want to continue to move forward after public comments?
I'd like a break.
Okay, so, uh, okay, we'll take public comments, then we'll have a, then I'll announce the break.
To be clear, it's public comments on anything not on the agenda tonight.
Ah, thank you. Anything not on the agenda you guys want to talk about? All right, uh, seeing none, why don't we go ahead and take, uh, oh, wait a minute? We've got one. Sorry.
Hello, how's everyone? Maria Bryant, 450, South Virginia Avenue. I am here tonight on a completely different subject about Global Peace Day. And Commissioners Carolyn is going to mention something later, I do believe. But the gentleman that is the peace manager at Valencia College had to step out. But I would love to give you guys literature. Um, the city of Orlando is heavily involved with Valencia College, um, Peace and Justice Initiative and program. And we're having something in the park September 21st, which is on a Saturday, uh, from 9:00 AM to 12:00. And we would love to have you guys a part of it. Chief Dill has definitely said he's going to do his best to try to be a part of it or send representation. And this is what I would like to leave for you. It's Williams Card and Rachel Allen, the director and the manager. So if you would be so kind, each, well, I only have five principals, so I don't have enough.
But we can't do the entire four hours?
No, we don't want you to do that.
Yeah, what time are you talking about?
You guys preferably will be there at... You guys preferably will be there at least nine AM, from nine to nine fifteen, if you consent to it.
Okay.
And I have the principals, I unfortunately only have five? That's enough? Okay.
And I have all of that.
You do?
Yeah. They're housed at our Winter Park Valencia campus, guys, this is a really big part of Winter Park, and we have participated in the past, we need to keep participating.
Thank you. September twenty-first, and Todd, I was going to message you, so, but I don't have to now, so I think.
And Maria, it would be, it would be helpful if we understood exactly what it is you needed us to do, that would be helpful.
What we are asking for the city to be a part with the Commissioners and the mayor, if you could read a principal, be just one, and you choose the one that basically speaks to your heart, and that, I think Anna Eskamani, she will be there amongst other leaders, and we just really want you to be a part. I'm so sorry to do this.
No, it's okay, I'm just trying to make sure we don't all pick the same one, you know, make sure that we're organized and.
So if I send you guys an email and, and, and ask you about your principals, would you respond to me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll do that, I'll follow up. That was one thing. Second thing, I have submitted emails to you, please come and support the new initiative. There's been so much talk about the public library, what's happening, what's not happening, who's happy, who's not, so we decided to do a series of music to bring everybody together, hopefully, and the kickoff is September thirteenth, so hopefully you guys will come out and support it and make this place exactly what we want it to be. Work, live, and play. That is all for me, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Ms. President. Any other additional public comments? Or anything that's not on the agenda? Give us your name and address.
Torrey Tompkins, three four five, Legacy Park Drive, Castleberry, Florida.
Thank you.
So I am the owner of an eco-friendly car wash company called Green Phantom LLC. Actually, we have three locations in Orlando right now. There's one in Waterford Lakes, there's one in Dr. Phillips Marketplace at Dr. Phillips, and there's also one down in the Target Shopping Center, City of Orlando. So to get this thing rolling, basically, we're ten years old, I had to go through BZA in Orange County, and Board of County Commissions, also, I had to get a condition of use permit as well in the city of Orlando, and basically what we do is we operate in shopping centers, usually C-one zones, so as demand grows, we would like to expand into Winter Park. The problem is that you guys have really strict zoning rules for C-one, which is not, that's not really a problem, it's just the fact that we don't really fit into a, a category, per se. So where you think car wash, we're not a car wash, we don't have a facility, we're eco-friendly, everything's done by hand, and basically, our customers are shopping in the shopping center, or they go to the movies, they eat, whatever they want to do, and while that happens, my employees basically take, they detail your car right there in a lot. You guys have really tight parking restrictions, I understand it's, it's super crowded in Winter Park, every shopping center there is to go to, but basically, before I moved forward to, like, do a deal with a shopping center, I've learned to go the route of asking my city first, and, you know, to see if there's something we could do, and I spoke to Mr. Bronson, planning, and also the mayor, about this whole concept, and basically I was guided towards this direction to explain to you guys what it is I'm doing, what I would like to do in the city, and to see how you guys felt about it, essentially. I'm not sure exactly how this works, you know, in this age, but I definitely wanted to present the idea, but we are eco-friendly, we're green, we're sustainable, there's no water runoff, there's no water reclamation, we can do a car with one cup of water. We book appointments online, we take walk-ins, that's like what it is just.
Okay, if, I'll just go ahead and add a suggestion, was to find out from staff what, you know, the ordinances are that you're not exactly meeting, and then I would suggest provide that to the Commissioners, if you want to talk to us each, and kind of, you know, I don't know another way to figure it out, Randy, that's kind of.
Right, I'll be happy to meet with Bronson in the morning and, and figure that out also, and then we can get back with this gentleman.
And, you know, if you got like the sustainability board on board with you, that would probably help a lot as well.
Right, and as far as following up with you, when I find out from Bronson?
Yeah, if you kind of go through Randy, that would probably be best, and then, and we have the sunshine laws we have to deal with, so Randy can kind of coordinate with the rest of us.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know that, you know, I don't know what the next step is, and I just want to hope Randy will figure out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any more public comments this time? Okay, want to take a break, you want to do ten minutes, or how about twelve minutes till six-ten? It's five fifty-eight, we'll start back up at ten after six, so, thank you, everybody.
Okay, it's six eleven, I'm a minute late getting this restarted. If we could please come back in the chambers. We did lose a great resident in the city of Winter Park and just before we got into our public hearings, I'm gonna let Sarah say a few words.
Well, I just wanted to say that anybody who knew Richard Swan knows that he's gonna leave a real hole in our community. Robin, of course, works at our chamber and works with Betsy, so Robin is married to Christian, who's one of Richard's kids, he had four kids. They lived across the street from me on Highland Road when I lived in my first house in Winter Park, and so I've always admired them a great deal, and certainly admired Richard and what he's done. So he's a big loss to our community, and you probably read about him, they did a very nice article about him in the paper, so he has an upcoming service on Wednesday.
Thank you, Sarah. If we could just take a moment of silence for Richard, then we'll get going, thank you. So we'll get into our public hearings now, item twelve A.
This first public hearing is a request to terminate an existing development agreement that we have on the property that's in the city at thirteen forty-five Clay Street. And if you've driven down Clay Street, you may not have noticed this little white farmhouse-looking building that was built in nineteen twenty-four or nineteen twenty-five. And the story behind this is that in two thousand and five, the property was for sale, and some folks that had a mental health counseling business wanted to buy it. It was zoned residential. They talked to Orange County about getting it rezoned, and the county said they would not. They came to talk to us, since Winter Park's on the other side of Clay Street, and we said, "Well, we'll rezone it if you guarantee that you'll preserve this historic home." So the deal was reached, and this home is on our register of historic places for the city, which means it has to be preserved, and they were allowed via our rezoning to utilize the interior for that mental health counseling business. And so this is called adaptive reuse, where you preserve historic structures by providing it with another useful lifetime of service. And so it's been that way ever since. When we were doing that in two thousand and five, there were some neighbors who live nearby, and when they hear medical and doctor, they were concerned about traffic and parking, because, you know, most doctors have a lot of traffic and parking for their clientele. But inside this house, it's a house. I mean, you go in and there's, you can see where the kitchen was, and where the dining room was, and the living room, and the bedrooms upstairs. I mean, the interior floor plan is not examining rooms and set up for waiting rooms and that kind of thing. It's still the interior floor plan of a house. But in order to placate or to mollify the residents at the time, we agreed to the development agreement that if they were ever gonna come back and put somebody into this house office, and we thought it was gonna have markedly more traffic or parking needs, that it would need approval from the city. Of course, there's no gauge to say what's more, more than what, and it's really not set up that it can ever functionally have more traffic than it has, 'cause again, inside it is a house. The property was for sale, and during the closing activities, this became a big problem with the financing of the loan and with the title insurance, because now, anytime a tenant changes, or anytime there's a sale, the city can veto it if we think that there is gonna be more parking or more traffic going to the building. So in order to avoid that scenario in the future, because it is what it is, they have asked the city if we could terminate the agreement and rely upon just the regular provisions that we have in our office zoning, 'cause it's only so big, it only has so many parking places, it's only so much land, and you can't tear it down and build anything new. This building is staying as is. They also feel that conditions have changed from before, because now we have a very large apartment complex that's being built next door in the former Calvary Church parking lot, and so no one should realistically be concerned about a couple more cars coming from this property, given the traffic impact that's gonna come from the apartments that is gonna be able to come down the same street and go out to Clay as well. So that's why the request is here. We do have one of the requesters here, if there are questions, but from the staff's perspective, we felt that the office zoning provided enough protections that we already have.
Questions?
Does the lot, right now as it is, have enough parking to satisfy the code for O-1 with what's in there?
It does.
Okay, that's good. That's encouraging.
Yeah, and there's limited ability to add parking, so...
And what does the new owner want to do with the property?
I believe we have him right here.
I'm Dr. Jerry Horton, and I'm the medical director of NDH management. I plan to put my medical office there, a small medical spa, continuing to preserve the house and the style of it. It's actually a nice bit for a small practice. I'll probably have less people coming through there than what it had been with the psychology group.
Okay, thank you, it's very kind of you to address my question. I do have another question. Can I ask the applicant?
Yeah, I have a quick question for Jeff.
Okay, yeah.
Just finish with Jeff real quick. So Jeff, just so I properly understand our current historic preservation ordinance and the way this is, that if there was something dramatically wrong with the house, they would be able to rebuild it as it is, or in the architectural style, or they really have to continue to just fix it up? I'm just asking if there's any possibility of someone coming through, and...
So, this is a road that we haven't gone down. If someone can demonstrate to the Historic Preservation Board that a home is not repairable under any circumstances, then they can tear it down. Of course, they still may have to build a structure of an architectural style from the period, craftsmen, et cetera. So for example, if they had a fire that took down two-thirds of this building, like we had with the one on North Park Avenue, that creates that kind of scenario. But no one can come to the board and go, "Oh, I just have a lot of wood rot, and I have this issue, and that."
Okay, yeah, what I was really trying to protect more was that you couldn't build something that didn't match the historic character on that site, correct?
Oh, and so any additions have to go to HPB exactly for that purpose.
But even if they rebuilt from the fire, they would have to build to the time period, no matter if it's office or...
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna get that clarification. Thank you.
Jeff, haven't we had a time when we actually removed a designation from a property?
No, we had a time when that was debated, but we never did remove it.
Good. Okay, so I was hoping we didn't make that mistake?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So my concern...
If you'd like to come up to the podium, right?
Thank you for your candidness in talking to me about this. When the original agreement was put in place, obviously, there were considerations on both sides of the fence, and the property owner, I don't know, it was another property owner at that point in time, got an upzoning on the property, and he moved into Winter Park, and the city got to preserve the house. And it wasn't a problem in normal zoning, because in normal zoning, once an office, always an office. But my concern is if I... Can you put the map that I gave you up on? I just want, I'll show you this too, so you know why I'm concerned, and I'd like my fellow commissioners to see this. If you look at the property in blue, behind that property, there are two other pieces of property, and they're both zoned R2, low-density residential. If you come south on the road, along Clay, all of those properties are also zoned R2, low-density residential. And across the road, it's all R1, single-family. So Orlando came along and they allowed this PD, which ended up putting three hundred and ten units right at your back door, and the back door of two other residential, low-density To me, if we're gonna go back on an agreement, we need to revert things back to the way they used to be. And I understand we're probably too late in the process for us to do that, which would be, yes, yes, we're gonna do away with this agreement for you, but oh, by the way, you go back to the original zoning, which was R2 residential. And I'm not asking you to do that, but what I am asking you is if you would be willing to agree to limit any future residential use of your property to R2, low-density residential standards. That's my concern. What I would not want to see is something to happen to this property so that it becomes used as office residential. Because in the city of Winter Park, unlike many other cities, our office residential, our office actually allows residential use at about seventeen units per acre, where all your neighbors would have residential use at an R2, low-density level, which is about half that, I think, maybe. Is that right, Bronx, about half that? I think R2, which is what all your neighbors that are aligned with you have, only allows...
Yeah, so on this particular property, the R2 zoning would allow about two-point-one units per acre, where seventeen units per acre would allow five, but that is only if...
Right, if everything else fell into... And my thought was the two adjacent, right.
If the historic designation was removed, and that sort of thing, and really, doing a little basic math here, the parking requirements for that number of units would really make...
Even if you had the two lots behind it?
If you added the two lots behind it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, those aren't in city limits.
So my question to you, I don't wanna get you tied up in all this, but my question to you is, are you willing to agree to utilize your property either as office or not to exceed the low-density residential zoning that's consistent with all your neighbors? That's the question.
I'm still not sure how that historic designation... I have no intent to modify the exterior building at all.
Wonderful, that's wonderful, okay. So you will be continuing to use it as office?
Yes.
That's your agreement? And, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Does anybody else have a question for it?
Any other questions?
I'll move it.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Kurt, my question to you is...
But we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? I'll second it.
Okay. My question is, is that, we have an agreement right now that could very easily, 'cause I do agree with you, it should not be nearly as restrictive as it is. That's way over the top.
Commissioner, they can't use it as residential at all.
That's what I wanna hear.
It's office zoning on the first floor only.
Okay, good.
They have a second floor, it has two bedrooms. It can't be that kind of units.
All right.
So they can't at all.
All right. Okay, that works for me. I just wanted to make sure it could not be torn down, and it could not be utilized as high-density residential. I don't wanna do the same thing to our neighbors that Orlando did. Thank you.
Well, that was my, it has to go to the Historic Preservation Board, right? That's why I wanted to make sure that that had some...
Did this go to the Preservation Board?
Yes.
It did?
Initially...
There's nothing here with minutes or...
No, when it got the original designation, it went to the Historic Preservation Board.
But this, the request to do away with this agreement?
This agreement was with the commission, not with the Historic Preservation Board.
Additions or changes to the exterior go to the board.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, we'll take public comment now.
Good evening, I'm Betsy Gardner-Eckbert, president and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, and I am a resident at five-four-one Fairfax Avenue in Winter Park. I'm speaking in two capacities. Number one, Dr. Horton is a member of the Chamber of Commerce and a member in good standing. More importantly, he's my twenty-year friend and my personal physician. He runs a boutique medical practice. He has not asked me to speak tonight, but I can speak to the quality of the care that he delivers, and that he does not run a huge, high-volume grind-in-and-out practice. He has a very boutique practice that's very consistent with Winter Park, and I can assure you that that would be a permitted use that would be consistent with Winter Park's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more discussion? Okay, if we go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seidel?
Yes. Thank you, and good luck.
Okay, the next item on our public hearing agenda is a subdivision or lot split of the property at twenty-seven-hundred Wright Avenue, and you can see on the big overhead there's a location on the corner of Wright and Winter Park Road. And here's a little bigger view with the property, as you can see what we use for the five-hundred-foot radius. The property has a hundred and fifty-six feet going down Winter Park Road, and a hundred and thirty-four feet as you go down Wright Avenue. The zoning is R1A, so you need seventy-five feet, eighty-five in the corner lot. The simplest thing that could have been done was to come in here and ask to split the property east-west. You would've had a seventy-five-foot lot, you would've had an eighty-one-foot lot, it would've been a little four-foot variance, that would've been de minimis, we would have no problem with it whatsoever. But there are three gorgeous, huge, OMG live oak trees, OMG, in the backyard of the property on the southern portion, that are forty inches, forty-five inches, and fifty inches in diameter, that I'm told the current owner planted when he built the house in nineteen sixty-seven. There you see the three trees in the backyard. So what the prospective buyer is asking to do is to divide the lot into two lots fronting on Wright Avenue, makes the frontages smaller, but in terms of lot area, they're comparable to the other lot areas in the surrounding neighborhood. And what we get, as the general public, in return for those variances is we get a permanent easement over those three live oak trees, that they will not be able to cut them down, that they won't be restricted on the amount of limb pruning and limb removal that they can do, so that these three live oaks will stay in place, and really, they're an amenity for the new homeowners as much as the previous one. And so there definitely is a quid pro quo that we are gaining from letting them divide it this way versus they would be wider lots if they're on Winter Park Road. And so we did have our public hearing on planning and zoning, no neighbors showed up in opposition, and planning and zoning recommended approval that the applicant enter into a tree preservation agreement with the city to preserve the three live oaks in the rear of these split lots. We are still in the process of looking at some word changes to that agreement with the city attorney's office. The first draft that we put in your books talked about it in the context of issuing permits. From all your discussions today, we probably need to change some of those words to make sure it's a commitment from the owners, as well as the tree permit, in case the day comes we're never issuing permits, and so we can make those changes. And then the other condition has to do with the varied architecture, and that is what they are planning to do in terms of both the look of them and also the floor plan, the site plan arrangement. One has a front-entry garage, as you see, and one has a different arrangement, so they will look different on the street. So with that explanation, you do have a recommendation for approval from P and Z.
Discussion, questions?
Questions for staff? How far is it from the actual tree to the house, and has Drew assessed the...
It is roughly...
The reality of, I don't wanna see another tree die because...
It is roughly...
I believe those are pools, so the distance to the pools is what we're really worried about, right?
Yeah, so it's roughly about twenty feet between the tree and the pool excavation, and that more or less is what Drew's guidance to me has been in the past, is keep twenty feet from the tree for the tree, and keep at least forty feet of the limbs.
Perfect, so Drew took a look at these?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. I just don't wanna repeat what we did on Orange Avenue, I still feel so bad about that. I can support this simply because to me, I don't wanna see the curb cuts out on Winter Park Road, you know, for me, and the fact that we also can save three heritage trees, and you really believe we can save these?
Absolutely.
Wonderful, I'd love to hear that, thank you.
Jeff, is there precedent for this kind of arrangement? Have we done this before?
Yes, we have. In fact, right around the corner on East End, there was a lot split approved for two fifty-foot lots, and we came away with a tree preservation easement for two live oaks that were on the lot that was already built on.
Okay, thank you. And Kurt, do you see any conflict with this and previous agreements like this with the new state statute?
I think we'll probably wanna tweak some of this based on the discussion we had earlier with respect to that. I think Jeff is encouraging that as well, saying, not tie it completely just to the permitting, but make it just a flat requirement, so if it's done by agreement, there should be no issue.
Thank you. And one other thing, sorry. How many other lots within the five-hundred-foot radius are width-wise smaller than what's proposed here?
Roughly about a third... Roughly about a third of them are this size or smaller, and the other two-thirds are larger.
So i- is it true that some of them are as narrow as 50 feet?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Okay, so I, I will move this and I will support it, but, but I have an issue with how we do this, and I think it's something that we need to think about, okay? So we're up here tonight approving a lot, two lots are going to be smaller than what we allow people to build on, that's what, that's what we're doing, and one of them is on a corner lot, which, you know, there's many of these requests, and we as a commission either have to say to ourselves and to our constituents, we look at each and every one of these individually and make the best decision we can as a result of the heritage trees and of the neighborhood and whatever it is, all of the above, and I don't have any trouble looking in the mirror when I do that, I have no trouble whatsoever, and, and I think that's what we are elected to do, and I know that's what you've done here, because that's why you're bringing it back to us like that. On the other hand, okay, we can also get ourselves in trouble if we say, we don't, we don't do this, because we do do it, we're doing it right now. So I think it behooves us as a commission to say out loud what we're doing today is in the best interest of, obviously, somebody wants it, obviously, nobody is supposing it in the community, so all of those are the positives, and, and at the same time, I hear from the people who say, well, you did it for them, why won't you do it for me? We have to come back with some way to explain that better than what we've done in the past, that's all I'm, I'm saying, because when I first read this, I thought, wait, we just had one of these, we didn't approve, okay? Now, how am I going to go look at those people in the face and say, but this one's different? We just have to be really aware of that, that's all. But I'm moving this one, I'm, I'm going to trust that you all have done the best job you can with this, and I do trust that.
Honestly, I'm one of the people that generally would say no, I mean, just say no.
Yeah, we, you guys, we have, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second it, thank you.
But I do have a legal question before we move forward. I do not understand what it means for us to have an easement. Does that mean that we are responsible to come in and prune it every six months? What does it mean that we have an easement?
We can craft it however we want it.
Okay, so we.
With respect. Right, well, an easement gives you certain property rights, so we have an interest, actually an interest in, in the property as an easement, so the easement as a protected.
I'm happy about it, I just need to understand what it means.
Sure, so, so if we want the right to go in and prune and trim and fertilize and the like, we certainly can provide for that, however, I don't think that's the intent, so, but, and even a tree preservation easement would give us the right to preserve the tree, we can enhance the language, I mean, it's, there's not a form agreement in the, in the code that provides for that, so it's a. Yeah, I mean, to follow his, his point, there's, like, I do agreements on stormwater ponds. The DOT agrees to use the pond, but they always reserve the right to go in and maintain the pond if it's not being maintained by the agency. So if these trees are not being maintained by the owner, the city has the right to go in and do something to take care of the trees. And so we don't expect the owners not to take care of the trees, we expect them to, but it also, like, if you get an owner that, you know, he doesn't like trees and he wants to poison them and kill them, you know, okay, we, we can't go in and try and save them.
No, and, and my issue was, I just needed to understand whether the owner of the home was still responsible to take care of the tree, and we only went in as an exception if it wasn't being taken care of or if we were proposing something different. And it sounds like if we're going to do it consistent with the water district, we only do it as an exception if they're not taking care of it.
We can add the language that makes that perfectly clear and giving us the right in the event, but not the obligation in no way, shape, or form.
Could I ask Drew if she has any comments on this easement? Do you see any hardship for the city taking this easement?
No, sir, I do not, you know, the most important thing is that we protected trees during the construction, and staff will be, you know, on-site doing random visits to make sure that the root protection is in place.
Yeah, it would be nice, like Drew, if you guys had a sign out front about, you know, these trees protected per easement through the city of Winter Park, because on most construction sites, what you see are people just kind of, you know, a guy's got to lay something down, there's nowhere except by the tree, because no one's allowed to put anything there, so he, he sets it down by the tree. So I think kind of having something on the construction documents so people be aware of it.
And we also have a signage that they can put up, and, you know, this contractor, just as a side note, has saved many trees throughout the years.
Great, thank you.
Do we really want this, guys? Do we really want this? I mean, we want the trees saved, but do we want the easement? What if somebody falls out of one of those trees, who's responsible?
It's simply a preservation easement that, I would give you another example, we have a, we have a property on the north side of Central Park that has a facade easement that says, this shall be preserved, this can never change, for the Keywin offices, it's the small cottage, they have an actual easement for the facade, gives us no responsibility to do anything. Really, all, it's all on the owner.
All right, it's fine, okay.
Simply a preservation easement, not like an access maintenance, that sort of thing.
That was the bit of information we needed, thank you. I'm thrilled.
Okay, any, any additional questions for staff? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, we'll open up for public comments. Anyone wish to comment on item 12B on the lot split? And, okay, seeing no comments, I do want to just ask about the language change, do we need to do something for the language change now? No, the way Jeff presented this, it was approval of the lot split, subject to acceptable language, consistent with the discussions and comments from the commission. This, what Jeff put in this agreement was a, a initial draft, it is not the final document. Now, if you wanted to come back, we can, but based on the direction I think you've given staff, it does not need to be unless you really want to see it back. There's only one reading on this, there's not a second reading? That's, that's correct, it's not a word. Okay, no, I have confidence that staff has heard what we're looking to have in the agreement, I don't know that I would need to see it again. All right, any, no more public comments, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Sprinkle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seidel?
Yes. All right, it's only 3:00, according to the clock. We weren't here too late, but that brings us to the city, commission reports 6:41. Sarah?
I just have a few things I wanted to bring forward, and my suggestion is that, that some of the things that we ask for in the budget, like those plans, that we might, we might want to add that, I might want you to add that, City Manager Randy, to your city report, because I want us to be aware of the fact that we're working on this plan, and I don't, I forget about it sometimes, and I'll think, where are we on this one? Or where are we on that one? Even if we're not doing anything yet and it hasn't been approved, I think it gives me more of a focus that says, that's what we're headed towards. So, so one of those things, and I think we kind of all had the same response, is when Peter Godfrey sent us a note this past week or so, and said, have you done this yet? And I'm like, oh dang, have we? And so things like that just might be better off put on there. Have we done what he asked?
We've submitted all the documentation to the state, we've asked them for approval of the language, and we're waiting on that approval.
That's all that I needed to hear. The other one was that we got a note from somebody who was talking about mildew on the sidewalks, do we have a, and somebody fell, and hey, that's everywhere right now with all the rain, is, is there any, any, tell me what we're doing with that?
It's my understanding that's the property owner's responsibility for making sure the sidewalk's clear in front of their house, it's not, the city doesn't go around washing sidewalks all around, all around the city.
We can get that young gentleman who was in here earlier to help us, okay. The last thing is. With a cup of water, I know. Carolyn and I were both at the, at the League of Cities meeting, and it was very well-done, we were honored to have our governor show up, and he spoke just exactly to the city people, and they, he had them all right here, because he told them, told us what we wanted to hear, so it was really interesting. And we had quite a few votes, and I know that I share what Carolyn can probably go into in further detail, but most of the time when I go to those meetings, I come out of there thinking, wow, we're doing really well in our city, just, that's how you, that's how you think, so thank you for what you all do and the way we work together.
I'll say it?
Yes, I'm done.
Excellent. Commissioner Cooper?
I have four, it's only 3:00. The first one, I was going to talk about Florida League of Cities, because I'm on that Transportation Policy Committee, and I'm sorry. And that is where the discussion of the Volkswagen settlement and that $166 million is, and, and the criteria is you need to be replacing something that's diesel with something that's an alternative fuel or electric. You need to be in the area that is most impacted by air pollution, which Orlando qualifies, and, and basically, you need to be ready to go. You need to have a plan, you need to have shown some commitment to it.
Like an electric car plan?
Electric car plan, I would really like to see us take advantage of some of these grants, and I don't know who writes our grants, you know, we used to have, do we have somebody doing that stuff?
We do.
Who is it?
Brenda Moody.
Oh, perfect, all right, she's a little busy with the library right now, I imagine. But it was, it was very enlightening, and basically, the, the takeaway from it was, we have money for water projects, and I know we have not moved forward with some of our water projects, but perhaps because of the political environment, this might be a time to be thinking about what small project we could get together to move forward, I'd like to see us get some of those funds. The second item is, you know, we talked last meeting, I guess, about accessory structures and non-conforming structures being utilized in the average for establishing lakefront setbacks, and I've been thinking a lot about that, and I just really believe that's not a good direction for us to be moving in, so I don't know what we could do to move that along, but I don't want to wait to some huge overhaul of the, of the codes to evaluate it, and I don't pretend to have the right answer, I just, I know math well enough to know what happens if you keep averaging in things that are only 10 foot from the lake. On the other hand, non-conforming structures, I think George shared with me that the majority of the homes over around Isle of Sicily, is that correct, George? Are, are non-conforming, so if you get to a place where every principal resident is non-conforming, I appreciate that, so I think, in all honesty, I think the problem may be more accessory structure than non-conforming structure, you know, but if staff could really look at that, I would appreciate it and make whatever recommendation you see fit. I know that Mr. Shward has been speaking with all of us, were you going to address that? I know we were waiting for you to look at your packet.
Just got my packet.
Okay, all right, so we'll have, once you've taken a look at it, we'll decide whether, as a commission, we are comfortable sending a letter to our new, or even sitting down and talking to our new postmaster about that. Another thing I want to talk about was affordable housing. I, I just received something yesterday from a friend of mine that said, I just want you to know that when people talk about the lack of affordable housing in Winter Park, I'm going to put you on the list and I'm going to send you every home in Winter Park under $200,000. There were 15 properties on that list that came to me today, and some of them were under $150,000, so I just want us to be aware of that and be able to say that to people when they say, what are you doing for affordable housing? And, and I also would like to get three nods from the commission to ask the staff to come back with some alternative uses of that affordable housing fund. I know a few years ago, I had recommended that perhaps we incentivize the police to live within our jurisdiction, I don't know if that's a legal possibility for that fund to at least make that incentive available, or if you would even think it makes sense, but I would love for you to think about what alternatives, maybe we need to buy some of those houses that have back taxes, or I would like to see us do something outside the CRA. I do, I personally don't like the idea of lumping in one small geographic area all of our affordable housing, I would rather see, see what we can do about dispersing it outside the CRA in neighborhoods where some of the homes need care.
Commissioner, do you have anything a little more specific than just have staff look at what we can do with the extra money?
Well, I, I guess probably, Greg, my, my point would be what can't we do? What legally, what constraints are on that pool of money? That's, that's the first thing I'd like.
So you'd like to just see those constraints?
I'd like to understand that.
Then we can maybe brainstorm after they bring that back.
Or have them brainstorm, you know, I just, I just don't like to see a half-million dollars sitting there when we have affordable housing needs.
You could buy a house in Winter Park for that.
You could?
I mean, that's it?
No, or, or we could, or we could help with some of the rehabs on, in areas where these houses have gone, been neglected, perhaps we could buy them and get them off the market and repurpose them as affordable housing within our community. I, I don't want to go building anything, I'm looking at, I'm looking at cleaning up what we've got, that's where I'm at.
Well, you were looking for nods?
Yes.
To do something, so you want, you want nods to have the staff put together what the current regulations are?
Right, what the current restrictions are.
And then are there properties available that we could purchase?
And then once they understand the restriction, to come back with some recommendations. I think, I think they have to understand the restrictions too, I'm not sure we've ever focused on it, you know?
Does that sound?
And I, and I just want to say, I'm not interested in building any.
Understood.
Thank you.
Randy, did you follow that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, number four, number, oh, that, that's it, must be all five, thank you very much.
I did, did I treat, well, that was up in the chart.
It's, it's, it's kind of how I treat Steve, that's how she treats me. It's all right, I'm used to it.
You are doing an excellent job, thank you.
Commissioner Weaver?
That was all good stuff, Carolyn, thank you. So, most every month, we have a watershed cleanup, and with the exception of the summer months, because it's just too darn hot, and I'm happy to say that the watershed cleanup around Lake Bell is coming up September 7th, and we'll be staging in front of my house.
You can barbecue?
Yeah, afterwards. You got to pick up trash to get the barbecue, and I've been, you know, an active member with the League of Women Voters, and the other night, I went to a, a conference on plastics and recycling, and that group asked me to speak on that on September 26th, and that's at the League of Women Voters Recycling Regular Meeting on September 26th at 6:30. Let me make sure that's right, yeah, at 6:30, and from what I've been reading, my ideas about plastic recycling was way off-base, and I'm anxious to share that with the rest of you. There's a lot of good things going on and a lot of very bad things going on, and I would encourage you to come and listen, there'll be other speakers speaking on it at other venues, but I'll be at Valencia at Winter Park on the 26th, and that's all I have, thank you.
Of course, I'd be hypocritical to say no.
Since you're not over here, I have to bring you back one time. We all got, have gotten a bunch of emails from Winter Park Hills residents this last week about their Spectrum and about their inability to get, is there anything we can say or do for those folks? Because I know it's a, a standard email, but I've gotten a ton, so has everybody here, I'm sure.
Yep, I sent a response today telling them where we, we are in the process with our fiber and with the invitation to negotiate that we put out, and also forwarding that to the government relations person at Spectrum, just so they know they got a problem at least in that area that perhaps, as, as Commissioner Seidel said to me today, that an engineering solution might resolve, so we're, we're working on it. I did, I ca- I did, I ca- I did. I copied you. It was late in the day, so you probably didn't see...
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. I'll go back to the plastics for a minute, because it was, I've been trying to use my single-use, my non-single-use plastic cup here, by the way, at the city. But I dropped my daughter off at school last week, and she's studying marine biology, and that reminded me that she had actually done a science test over at Winter Park High School, where she tests, she wanted to see what had more plastic in it, ocean water or lake water. And the bad news was that they both had plastic in them. And so I thought that was interesting, because you really don't think about our lakes as having small bits of plastic floating around. But, so when we talked about the health of the lakes, that was one of the items. But the good news was, the ocean had more, but that's also bad news, you know what I mean? So that our lakes had less. So anyway, I just wanted to share that, and it's, it's kind of become a, an interesting topic, if you will, that, you know, what are we leaving behind? In 400 years from now, what will be leaving our plastic? So if we can all kind of think about that, I would appreciate that, and, you know, see what the city can do on those, on that note. So, with that...
One last thing.
Should've known.
Thank you very much. This was your first time doing this, and you did a great job for us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 6:55. Adhere.